We will call the November meeting to order. Can I have roll call, please?
Mr. Hurd?
Here.
Here.
I'm here. This is Washington. Mr. Hoitsman?
Here.
Mr. Neal?
Here.
Mr. Barbour?
Yeah.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
Thank you, all present.
Thank you very much. Each of you received copies of the minutes of the October meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? And if not, I'll take a motion.
Second.
A motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Use the one out of your...
Yes, please.
Everybody use the one that came in your packet. Not your packet, in the...
In the folder.
In the folder.
Labelled, okay.
Labelled, okay. All right. Do I have number four, please?
The first item, Agenda Item Number Four, Land... Excuse me. Land Development Code Text Amendment, DEV 2014-108, permitting EMCs at retail centers along A1A.
Okay. Can we hear from staff, please? Well, there's not room enough for us to go there, so he'll have to come here. Yeah, there he comes, I think. Can we hear from staff, please? Take a minute.
Apologize for being late there. Dennis Merzak, planner with the City of Daytona Beach. Which item were we...
Number four.
Number four.
The electronic message signs.
With the board's permission, what I'd like to do is do three and four... Excuse me, four and five together. One is a text amendment, the other one's a comprehensive sign plan that's associated with the text amendment. And I think it'll make more sense if we just go ahead and do them both at the same time. So, I'll present them both, and then you can act separately.
Just vote on them separately.
Do I need to read it?
I will go ahead and read. Agenda Item Number Five is a comprehensive sign plan, DEV 2014-107, for Bel Air Plaza.
Again, thank you. Dennis Merzak, planner with the City of Daytona Beach. The first item, Item Number Four, is a request by Rob Merrill of Cobb Cole on behalf of GNI Seven Bel Air Plaza, LLC, to amend Land Development Code, Article 18, apparent standards, Section 6.20 and 6.21 signs, permitting EMC signs via CSPs for retail centers located along the west side of Atlantic Avenue, or A1A, on sites exceeding 25 acres. And we'll get this... The bar will come up here in just a second. Electronic message center signs, or EMCs, the EMC ordinance was adopted back in March of 2011. It has permitted EMCs in certain zoning districts and for specific uses, provided for design, construction, location, operational standards. And this proposed LDC amendment would modify permitted locations for EMC signs. Recently approved EMC signs, this over the past couple of years, include the Daytona Beach Kennel Club, Halifax Hospital, and Burritle Mine Campus. Two signs were approved over the BCU campus, Daytona Auto Mall, and most recently over the Volusia Mall. There was a very similar application that was approved. As far as the proposed text amendments, we have two different portions of the code that are being amended. The first one is locations where EMCs would be permitted in the city. I've got the proposed text, you can see it, it's in red and underlined. Right now, retail centers located along ISB, on sites exceeding 35 acres, are permitted EMCs. In this particular amendment, it adds for retail centers located on the west side of Atlantic Avenue, on sites exceeding 25 acres, would also be permitted to have an EMC through a comprehensive sign plan. Brings us to the second portion of the text amendment, which is allowing who can have a comprehensive sign plan. This is just very similar language to what we did with the Volusia Mall. It says that if you are located along the west side of Atlantic Avenue, and on a site exceeding 25 acres, you're permitted to apply for a CSP. I wanted the... Let me just get to the recommendation. The use of the electronic message center signage within the city is a policy matter ultimately decided by the City Commission after a recommendation by the planning board. Staff does support the board's recommendation. An affirmative vote of six is required by the planning board to be required to recommend approval to the City Commission. And going to the next item. Anybody have any questions about that last item?
Anyone?
Are you talking about questions about the location of the signage?
No, just on the text itself, where EMCs would be permitted, in this case for retail centers adjacent to A1A, the west side of A1A, and 25 acres or more, and CSPs in those same locations. That's just that item right there. It doesn't have to deal with the CSP specifically for Bel Air Plaza at all.
Okay.
And it doesn't relate to message signs, electronic message signs on A1A?
The only way it would relate to it is by allowing this location to have the EMCs. It would permit EMCs onto Atlantic Avenue just for these types of locations.
And on the west side.
On the west side, correct.
Okay, my question is, how many such acreage sites do we have on A1A?
For this particular type of language, this is the only site that would qualify.
The only site.
The only site.
I was just looking at 20... We have 35 acres on ISB, 100 acres on the retail centers, and we're looking at 25 acres on the west side of A1A. And if I were somebody who had 25 acres on ISB, I might come back and want an amendment to go back with it. I'm just looking at the variety of parcel sizes that we have and thinking we want to think about this. I don't think there's anything similar to this on A1A within the Daytona Beach city limits. But I would have to ask, are there 25 acre parcels on ISB that might come?
Well, it's a possibility. They would have to go through this process to be able to be allowed to do that. But one of the reasons why you see the larger size on ISB is you do have the opportunity for larger developments on ISB where you don't have that necessarily on A1A. It's possible to acquire properties to get a larger size, but at this point, it's just not a... Just not in... There's not enough properties to be able to do that.
I did go by the Volusia Mall sign the other day, and I know I had questions of size. I didn't find it offensive, and I do know Bel Air Plaza is a large, you know, shopping center that's, I think, unique on it. But I just am looking to see how many different occasions we find for those amendments.
I'm glad you pointed that up. You were talking about the size of the sign. I think what we talked about last time when the Volusia Mall was coming through, we talked about the sign height could be no more than eight feet, I believe it was. Doing a little bit more research as to the signs, you were looking at the BR2 zoning district and what was permitted. There is a special section in the Land Development Code that talks about signage for shopping centers. Signage for shopping centers is entitled to be 50 feet tall. So, it's a higher standard, higher sign based on the use, and it was taken into consideration with shopping centers are going to be larger in scale, and you can have the larger signs, so...
It was proportional, so...
Yeah, so it was proportional. And so they came in a little bit less than more than they were actually permitted for the monument sign.
Are there any other questions?
Would this have any issue with the turtle restrictions for lighting?
Gosh, I hope not. It's across the street, it's...
It would have to meet the standards.
Yeah, I think the further you are away, I think the standards change a little bit, so I think they'll have to make... Whatever those standards are, they'll have to meet them.
I think it's blocked, the view... It wouldn't be visible from the ocean because it has those...
Rob Merrill, for the record, 149 South Ridge. What it has to be... According to the county's ordinance, has to be visible by someone standing on the beach. And we have to meet the standards, really.
Are there any other questions?
All right, I'll go into Item Number Five, then. Item Number Five is the comprehensive sign plan for Bel Air Plaza. It is a request by Rob Merrill with Cobb Cole on behalf of GNI Seven Bel Air Plaza, LLC, to approve a resolution for a comprehensive sign plan for Bel Air Plaza. The sign location, this is, again, on the west side of A1A. It's at the northern... One of the most northern points of the city, out there in that area. Comprehensive sign plans, these are typically to identify all the existing and the proposed signage for the development. This CSP is pending approval, the LDC text amendment that we just talked about. So, without the approval of the text amendment, this type of sign wouldn't be permitted. The CSP wouldn't be permitted, and the LED that they're proposing would not be permitted. So, they do go hand in hand. There are several types of signs that are being requested or identified with the sign plan, and this is typical. You'll find a lot of different types of signs. These include the identification signs, and this identification sign is actually the sign that includes the EMC. Tenant ground signs, there are some existing tenant ground signs I will talk about a little bit. Directional and informational signs, graphic and decor, regulatory signs, and tenant signs. Those are the building signs, wall signs. As far as sign type one, identification signs, the primary identification sign, this is the large sign, the 35-foot sign that's going to be going at the main entrance of the Bel Air Plaza. It's located in the middle of the plaza. Take a look on the screen, I've got it right up there for you. That's where it's going to be located. The sign itself, again, is 35 feet tall, and it does have an LED proposed for it. I don't have it flashing, but that is where the LED would go. This particular LED, I believe, is 45... Or 48 square feet in that location. Their comprehensive sign plan would permit up to 150-foot, square foot of an EMC sign. So, although this is a 48-square-foot sign, the comprehensive sign plan does permit up to 150 square feet for the EMC sign. So, that can be larger. And that does still fit into the standards of the Land Development Code for what a size of an EMC can be. Let's see here. Again, that's the... The sign is actually 35 feet tall. As I mentioned before, 50 feet is the maximum they can have for a shopping center. However, the code says that if you're going to have an EMC sign in the ground sign, it can only be eight feet tall. So, the request, there's a waiver request saying because of the 35-foot tall sign, that's a waiver to the Land Development Code to have an EMC in that sign. One other waiver that they're looking for is to allow display graphics, static graphics, no moving pictures, no videos. It would just be static graphics for the EMC, and also to permit multiple background, foreground, and text colors. Right now, the Land Development Code, you're limited on the amount of color that you can have in the signs. So, this opens that up just a little bit. This is the secondary ID sign. That's on the south side of the property. This is approximately eight feet tall. I think it's 20 square feet of sign area with that sign, consistent with the primary ID sign. And then we've got the existing tenant signs. Couple of different locations on the north side, you've got the existing Walgreens sign. On the south side, you've got the existing bowling sign. Those are going to be staying in place. They've had them for a while, and the tenants like them, and they'd like to keep them, so they're going to be included in the comprehensive sign plan. Let's see. Provisions have also been made for directional and informational signs. These are signs that are... Help pedestrians and vehicles maneuver around the site. Also, graphic and decor signs, these include some signs that can be attached to the light poles within the parking lots, some fan banners, types like that. And then we have the regulatory signs, or regulation signs, which are the stop signs and the yield signs for the traffic. And then also the tenant signs, which we've got an example of some of the tenant signs that are up there. These tenant sides, the applicant hasn't asked for anything different than what the code currently permits for tenant sides for wall signs. So, that language has just been transferred into the comprehensive sign plan, and they're going to continue to be allowed to do what they currently do. So, as far as a recommendation for the CSP, the application request is tentatively scheduled to be reviewed at the January 21st, 2015, public hearing, City Commission meeting. Based on staff analysis and review, the request for approval of the comprehensive sign plan for Bel Air Plaza will be in compliance with the Land Development Code and comprehensive plan if approved by action of the City Commission. Majority vote of the planning board members present and voting is required for recommendation of approval to the City Commission. And that does conclude staff's presentation.
Are there any questions of staff?
I do. On changes of color, is that similar to what was done at the auto mall, et cetera?
Yeah, I think they had the exact same language at the auto mall, that they can have multiple colors, but they still have to be... It has to be static, and it can't change within every 30 seconds. 30, 30 or 60?
60.
60 seconds. They can't change the picture. They have to wait 60 seconds before they change the picture.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I don't see any location for the flags and banners that you talked about.
Yeah, there's... Those are locations that they can kind of have a little bit more flexibility with, based on the tenants that might be using those types of banners. There are restrictions to the amount that they can have.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask you next.
Yeah. The last page of the CSP talks about the maximum square footage that they can have for those banners. And we've actually had them reduce the amount that they originally requested based on the amount of tenants that they have and the uses that they have.
You have differing heights of those banners, too, it looks like, or flags. Are those intended for the parking lot?
I'm going to have the applicant speak to that, but the flags can actually be used in different parts of the development. The banners... There are specific banners that are tied to... Secured to the light standards within the actual parking lot itself. So, those are going to be located within the parking area in the center portion of the development.
So hypothetically, someone could have, on their storefront, they could have a mounted post banner, they could have flags, and wall-mounted banners.
They could.
All three.
They're all three.
Plus a sign.
Conceivably, yes. They are limited on those banners for the entire development, so it wouldn't be as if everybody can have those. So, it's a... It's more of a... I guess the landlord would make the determination of who would be able to access what or get whatever type of banner at any particular time.
We don't have any control over that.
Well, they'd have to...
Just to say, hey, you can have these.
Well, even signs, they have to apply for permits for signs, so they have to come in, and we have to make sure that they're still in compliance with the comprehensive sign plan when they do come in.
Any other questions?
Dennis, I want to make sure I understand the colors in the signs. We said multiple colors. Explain the difference in the multiple colors they want in opposition to the multiple colors, let's just say, that Bethune-Cookman has. Is there a difference or a limitation on the number of colors?
No. They... This is the same as BCU and what they have for theirs. The current code says that you can only have a solid background, one color. Solid text, another color. One of the fears was that if you allow multiple colors, what you end up getting is you create graphics, essentially. And, you know, by putting two colors, three colors, four colors, you're kind of creating these pictures. Yeah, I think after time, they said, you know, that maybe isn't such a bad thing. Maybe these graphics aren't such a bad thing. So, that's when they said, let's open it up to allow the graphics, allowing these multiple colors. Let's make sure that we're not having a strobe effect. We keep it up there for 60 seconds, you know, with the picture, move on to the next picture after that, make sure we don't have video. We don't want to be having video show because that can be a bit of a distraction, but to have something that's a little bit more palatable to the eye with the multiple colors. And a lot of the multiple colors will actually work with a lot of the different companies with their logos. The single colors sometimes just don't work, and it makes it a little bit difficult, so...
Do we have any limit on the intensity?
Yeah.
Because that was a problem I saw down in Port Orange coming over the bridge one time. Wow.
We do. There are...
Very bright.
Yeah, this particular sign is required to meet LDC requirements, which... And we measure the intensity in what's called nits. During the day, when it's brighter, they can have 5,000 nits. At night, when it gets darker outside, you don't need it to be as bright, and it has to be reduced to 500 nits. So, there is an intensity, and that's a standard that we've researched when we did the original EMC amendment and found that it was acceptable.
Okay.
So, if all of the banners and everything are up here, close to 2,000 square feet of signage?
And it's all totaled up over there is what the potential is for that.
Right. I'm trying to picture that parking lot with the banners flying and the pennants from the lamp posts and the sign flashing.
Any else?
That would mean the poles would have to be permanent in the parking lot unless they're going to put little grassy areas in there.
Yeah, the... Yeah, the poles would be permanent, the pole signs with the banners that they use, yeah.
They got a lot of problems over there that have tenants.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. Can we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Rob Merrill, for the record, with Cobb Cole, 149 South Ridge. And I'm going to pass out a few larger versions of this plan. All great questions, and thank you, Dennis. You did most of my job for me. I had a couple of things I want to say in addition to that. But one of the reasons for passing this out is... Well, two reasons. One, so you can see the pictures a little better, and the other is, on the eight-and-a-half by 11, you guys can't read what's on this thing, so a lot of your questions are answered by the text that's contained in the CSP. I'm going to start by saying that you had a lot of questions about, is this like something else, or is there something different? There's almost nothing new about this. This is all the same things we've talked about now for a couple of years, except that it's at Bel Air Plaza. It's almost identical to what we proposed for the mall, and... Which was very recently approved, and you've actually, thankfully, had a chance to see it. Just the EMC sign, that is, just got put up this week, so gives you a real good idea of what you're going to get here. The only difference, like I said, is the actual location. The question's about where else could it be? This is custom fit for this location, same way the mall was. The bigger question of where should they be elsewhere? You've asked that before, several of you, and I don't know the answer to it. All I know is when someone comes along that is... That wants this type of signage, that thinks it's going to be good for their business, they're willing to pay for it because they're expensive, EMC signs, that is, and they're willing to do a comprehensive plan of their whole project, which usually results in better signage for everybody, I think it's a good idea, I'll bring it to you. If I don't, I don't. And so, if the question's asked to me, do you think you should change the code to allow these types of signs and these sign plans in other places? My answer, if you're asking me personally, is yes. How many? Not sure. But what I don't want to do is I don't want to be burdened with having to come up with that decision in order to bring one to you that I think makes sense, which is what we're doing here tonight, again. So, if you have any questions about either of these two, as it relates to that idea, I'm happy to answer them, or anything about the plan that I just passed out to you. You know, flags and banners, we've limited them significantly based on staff's request. They're intended to be, you know, this is a grand opening type thing, Larry, used for that type of activity, rather than loading up a bunch of signs in front of a particular tenant's particular location. But again, the landlord has control over all that, and of course, it's in the interest of the owner of the property not to make it such that one tenant affects the business of the other detrimentally. They all pay us rent.
Are there any questions of the applicant?
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody in the audience like to speak in favor of this issue? Is there anybody who would like to speak against? Board? Any discussion?
Yeah. I just... You know, we have this all the time, and it's the businesses. It's just, I compare it to, like, who... Everybody wants the new cell phone. This is the new sign, and businesses see it, and it needs to be directional. And I don't have a concern that there's going to be too many, because you got too many, then it doesn't suit the purpose, that it's intended to direct you to whichever business that the sign is.
Anything else?
My concern is, for Item Four, is we have one request for 25 acres or more. What happens if you have one for 20 acres or more? And folks, you know, where are you going to limit what you grant for exemptions and so forth? So, that's my concern. My concern is, I went from 100 acres, I understand the location, 35 acres, I understand, now we're down to 25. What's to stop us from going to 20, 10, 5, 2, maybe just every lot? So, that's my concern.
Well, the only thing that would stop it would be us.
How about that? Exactly.
It has to come here.
And so, that would be my concern with this particular request. I think the whole signage program for Item Five is great. I think it balances it out, makes it look wonderful, I mean, directs people to where they're going, but my true concern is Item Four.
I think that's a valid point. Is there any other discussion?
Well, I agree with what you said. It comes here, so if it is 20, and it's not appropriate, or if it's five, or if it's seven, then we're going to say no. Doesn't make any sense, but it did at the mall, and I think it does at Bel Air.
Anything else? I'll take a motion.
We make a motion, we approve Land Development Code text amendment permitting electronic message centers via comprehensive sign plans in retail centers, DEV 2014-108. Second.
I have motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
How many?
One, I think.
One? Just you?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Let's move on to number one, six.
Now, I need to... Number five.
That was number four.
What do we have to respond to?
Voting separately.
Oh, separately.
Yeah.
All right.
So, make a... Do we have any discussion, or just make a motion?
Any discussion on five?
Make a motion, we approve comprehensive sign plan, Bel Air Plaza, DEV 2014-07.
Second.
I have motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we'll move on now.
Item number six, which is a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment, DEV 2014-114, PNS Paving, Inc. Good... No, I'm sorry. In my... I see on my... On here, it says Madison Avenue rezoning on this sheet. I want to make sure I'm reading it, but the stack that I have, am I doing the correct one here? Yes, okay. Yes, okay. Yes, it is PNS Paving, okay.
We have a staff, please.
Good evening. Elizabeth Mate, planner with the city. This is a request by... This is a request by Rob Merrill of Cobb Cole on behalf of Tim Phillips with PNS Paving for approval of a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment changing the future land use map designation from Volusia County Low Impact Urban to Daytona Beach General Industrial for 11.1 plus or minus acres of land located at 3701 Olson Drive. The amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan. It does not represent urban sprawl and will result in a decreased demand on water and sewer. You have your aerial there, your... It should... That you can see where the current asphalt plant exists, and there's your future land use. The current is Volusia County Low Impact Urban. The proposed is Daytona Beach General Industrial. There's your zoning. And it'll also result in a reduction in trip generation. The proposed amendment is being processed by the city concurrent with a proposed PCD rezoning for 30.7 plus or minus acres, and will assign a Daytona Beach future land use designation to a parcel of land already within the city that currently has a Volusia County future land use designation. And it will also allow for uniform expansion of the current commercial operation encompassing the property. Based on staff review, the proposed amendment from County Low Impact Urban to City General Industrial appears to meet the criteria of the comprehensive plan, and a majority vote of the planning board members present and voting are required to recommend approval of this policy matter to the City Commission.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of staff? Thank you very much. Are there any questions of staff? Anyone? Thank you very much.
Do we want to do that one, six and seven? Like we did the other one?
Because this is a comprehensive plan amendment, probably should do this separate.
All right. Can we hear from the applicant?
Different criteria, substantially different.
Rob Merrill, again, for the record, Cobb Coal, 149 South Ridgewood. Thank you, Elizabeth. I don't have a whole lot to add. This is actually a piece of property that's fully developed. It's, PNS Paving operates their asphalt batching plant there, have been for quite some time. It was annexed into the city and never got a land use designation. This is really a housekeeping thing. The next one is similarly a housekeeping type item, and I'll explain that in a minute as well, but just want you to know that this is not a project, this, that's a proposal. This is something, it's a business that's operating.
Okay. Any questions of the applicant?
Thanks.
Is there anybody in the audience like to speak in favor? Would anybody like to speak against? I'll take a motion.
Make a motion. We approve Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment, PNS Paving, DEV 2014-114.
Second.
You have a second?
Second.
We have a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Can we hear from staff, please?
Uh, thank you. Next item, item number seven. It's a request by Rob Merrill, Cobb Coal, on behalf of PNS Paving, Inc., to rezone 32.7 plus or minus acres of land located at 3701 Olson Drive from Volusia County Industrial Plan Unit Development, or IPUD, to, and Heavy Industry, M5, to Planned Commercial Development. Again, the site is located, and I, this is kind of a recap of what you just heard from Elizabeth, but the site is located on the southwest side of the city, near Indian Lake Road. Here's an aerial for you, kind of gives you an idea of the, some of the development that's occurring out there. The, the land use of the property is actually mixed. That's only a portion of it. The actual land use of the property is the Low Impact Urban, which we have the application for right now to modify to General Industrial, and then the other half of the property, which is currently General Industrial. The zoning of the property, half of the property is zoned IPUD. That's the property that was annexed into the city. The other half of the property is M5, and the proposal is to rezone the entire property to PCD. As far as PNS paving, the PCD rezoning, again, there is the pending complaint amendment for the 11 acres, the change of land use to General Industrial. That 11 acres, again, Rob had mentioned it was annexed, it was annexed into the city in December of 2012, so this is a house cleaning measure to do that. Proposed rezoning is for the entire 31 acres of the site. The proposed uses in the planned development agreement, they're consistent with the existing M5 zoning district, so they're looking for something that's currently permitted in the M5, and they're just expanding that over to the other side. I gave you a, really, as a plan of what they're, it's not really what they're proposing to do, it's really what they're doing. The site has been operating with the General Industrial and the Industrial Plan Unit Development to operate as an asphalt plant, and it has been operating as an asphalt plant. Here's an aerial, a recent aerial of the property. It shows you the activity that's taking place out there, and it's exactly what it's intended to do. As far as a recommendation, staff does recommend approval to rezone the 30.7 acres of land located at 3701 Olson Drive from Volusia County Industrial Plan Unit Development and Heavy Industry to Planned Commercial Development and into a PCD agreement. An affirmative vote of six will be required or shall be required to recommend approval to the city commission, and that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you very much. Any questions of staff? Thank you.
Thank you.
Applicant, please.
And Rob Merrill with Cobb Coal, 149 South Ridgewood, here on behalf of PNS Paving, again. Not a whole lot to add. This is really a housekeeping thing. I do want to say, though, that, in fact, what Dennis said about there being an operation out there, part of this property is in a county zoning and other parts in city zoning. We're putting them all together in a PD. Kind of a good example how you kind of wrap a plan together in PD. Some people don't think PD, I've heard people say they don't like PDs or something about it. This is a good example of how it really puts it in a package, and everybody knows what they're getting. They're actually, I think, having a topping off party in a couple of weeks for the expansion, or they put in new batching plant out there that's, I think, a more modern facility, and it's better in a lot of ways, including environmental and otherwise. So, it's all a good thing, but I wanted to, I wanted to say one thing. This company, you know, we do a lot to try to attract big companies to this area. This is a big company that's originated in Volusia County, and they employ a lot of people and do a lot of business around here, build a lot of roads for us, and I think that we probably ought to give them an attaboy along with an approval on this one. So, Tim and Todd Phillips, I think, do a lot for Volusia County and for Daytona Beach, and they're just here asking for a real simple zoning request.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
I don't have any questions, just a comment, though, to back pack on what he says. Just, you know, it's kind of exciting when we see our local companies expand, and to expand, and I don't think that Rob's really representing them, because it says no variances are asked for. But it's pretty exciting to see a local company expand, and of course, expansion means more employees.
They've gotten some big bids lately.
Yeah.
Just lately, yes.
Let's see. Anybody in the audience like to speak in favor? Anyone like to speak against? Board?
I make a motion. We approve item number seven, rezoning Planned Commercial Development, PCD, DEV 2014-115.
Second. Have a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Our recommendation will be for approval and an attaboy.
I used to, I used to work as a neighbor to them, and they were excellent neighbors, so, long time ago.
Thank you. Yes.
All right. Agenda item number eight, which is a rezoning Residential Plan Unit Development, RPUD, DEV 2014-122, Madison Cove Apartments, RPUD.
Here's to hear from staff, please.
Uh, thank you. Dennis Morozak, planner with the city of Daytona Beach. Next item is a request by Parametric Design and Development LLC on behalf of Tim Allison Lane LLC to rezone 2.2 plus or minus acres located at 650 North Beach Street from Shopping Center BR2 and multifamily R2A to Residential Plan Unit Development, RPUD, to allow for a multifamily 55-plus, seven-story, 80-unit apartment complex and enter into a PD agreement. The location of the proposed development is at the southwest corner of Madison Avenue and Beach Street. I have an aerial for you also. Shows you how it's adjacent to the Beach Street redevelopment area, but it's not located in the Beach Street redevelopment area. The land use of the property is retail, retail to the north, retail to, really, retail around all sides except across the street from, from Beach Street. It looks like it's a parks land use. And then the zoning, again, the current zoning is BR2 and R2A, and the proposed zoning is, is RPUD. The Madison Cove RPUD, this is the former location of the Aloha Mobile Home Park. Some may be familiar with that. There was a settlement agreement with the city back in March of, just this year, March of 2014. Within the settlement agreement, it was required that they remove all the mobile home park, or mobile homes from the park, and then they abandoned the mobile home use on the site, so the mobile home use would no longer be permitted on the site. For this, there was a reduction of the financing that had accumulated on the property, and it was negotiated that the city would do an administrative rezoning to the property. At the time, it was decided BR2 was the administrative zoning, but there was no prohibition to do any other type of zoning. Another zoning would have been permitted also. BR2 was identified, though. As far as the, what is being proposed with the Madison Cove development, there is a request to rezone it to the Planned Unit Development for the 80-unit apartment building, seven stories tall for the apartment building, and I'm going to show you exactly where that seven stories is located. And this is going to be an age-restricted development, residents 55 and older, it would be restricted in the PD agreement. Provided a couple of elevations for you. These are all also available in your PD, in your packet. This is the elevation, seven-story elevation. This is what you would see from Madison looking south. And this is, you'll see the seven-story over there on the right-hand side, and in the single-story portion of the development on the left-hand side, this is what you would see facing west from Beach Street. This is an aerial of the actual location. This is a pretty recent aerial that we have. Just want to zone that out a little bit. You see Madison Avenue runs to the north, runs on the north of the property, east-west. Beach Street, you'll see that on the left-hand or the right-hand side, running north-south. There's a mobile home park to the south. There's some single-family across the street, some retail across the street, some industrial across the street, and then across, there's a small right-of-way to the west, and there's some empty lots over there, and there's a single-family house over there. I'm going to show you exactly where all of those are located. Again, those are also located in your packet, so. I wanted to kind of drop the development and give you an idea of the scale of how that would be if it were to be developed. Just give you your bearings. Again, the seven-story building, that's that section right over there, that's in the yellow. The single-story building in the green, that's up, kind of running parallel to Beach Street, and then the pool amenity is behind the single-story. With this application, the application has requested three different waivers from the LDC, and go through them real quick and explain them a little bit. One of them is that there is a site plan requirement to do a rezoning to a PD. We don't, we don't distinguish between a site plan for a PD or a site plan, any other type of the site plan. So, there's a lot of technical requirements that are associated with a site plan. The applicant is elected to go with a PD plan, which is a general layout. They will be required to go through a site plan approval process where they're going to have to meet all technical requirements of the land development code. If, if this were to get approved with the PD plan, and in the future, they came back with a site plan that didn't meet these standards, and they had to come back and change some things, it would require an amendment to the PD, and they'd have to go back through the process to identify exactly what it is that they didn't do, to be able to show you what the changes are going to be. So, it's a, it's a waiver from them having to provide the technical requirements of a site plan at this point in the rezoning process. They're, but they are providing a PD plan, which does a really good job of laying out where all of the buildings are, the parking are, the landscaping. We were able to identify where the, where the variances would be required and where they wouldn't be required, and we've only identified these variances for the, for the application. The second one is a reduction of the minimum number of parking spaces. 80 units would require 160 parking spaces. They're looking for a reduction to 80 parking spaces. We had the applicant provide some documentation showing that this particular type of development, the 55-plus community, wouldn't necessarily need the full 160 parking spaces, and that 80 spaces would be adequate for this type of use. They did provide something. They do have similar type, type units that they operate with, so they do have a good understanding of what their parking would be for a type of development like this. Whoops. The other, the other waiver request has to do with the minimum setbacks based on compatibility to single-family. Now, the applicant does meet, if you take a look at just the straight setback requirements that are associated with the development, they may meet those, but there's another additional standard that they have to comply with, and it has to do with compatibility when adjacent to single-family. So, we have to take a look at where the single-family is located, and if they're adjacent to the single-family. We do have, and it's not just single-family zoning, it's also single-family uses. Now, none of that property around there is single-family zoning, but we do have some single-family uses around there. The, I've got different colors over here. Again, these are in your, in your packet, but the red is the property. The white is the multifamily to the south. You'll see purple, that's the industrial, or, you know, some of the park over there also. Yellow is a commercial or retail. The blue that's over here, those are vacant lots across that narrow right-of-way. There is a right-of-way that runs over here, and then you see single-family in green. There's single-family over here, and then there's some single-family across the street, across Madison over there. So, having the single-family over there, there is a requirement for compatibility when you have a multifamily that's adjacent to single-family. They don't meet those requirements for those setbacks. For example, and it's based on height, there's a height requirement, and then there's setback requirement. The taller the building, the more the setback is required. For example, if they had a 55-foot tall building, they would require 125-foot setback from their property line. So, this particular site, it's a little bit smaller site, and just wouldn't be able to accommodate a 125-foot setback, at the very least, for some of their buildings. So, they are asking for a waiver from the compatibility standards adjacent to single-family uses. So, as far as a recommendation, should all waiver requests be approved? Staff concludes that the application to rezone the 2.2 acres located at 650 North Beach Street from BR2 and R2A to RPUD to allow the multifamily 55-plus, seven-story, 80-unit apartment complex will be in compliance with the comprehensive plan. This is if, should all of the waivers be approved. The item is tentatively scheduled to be heard by the city commission for first reading on December 17th and second reading on January 7th, 2015, and that is a public hearing. There is an affirmative vote of six that is required to recommend approval to the city commission. One other note I wanted to say, the applicant, we did tell him that it would be in his best interest to have a neighborhood meeting. We've been told that they did have a neighborhood meeting. We haven't gotten a whole lot of response from that neighborhood meeting. He can speak a little bit more on that, but I believe we probably have some people over here that were also at the neighborhood meeting who would also like to speak on that. So, any questions about the neighborhood meeting can be directed to the applicant. Dennis, I'm not sure if you covered it, but in their folders, the original plan we gave you on land use had the redevelopment area whited out, so in your folder, you have the property to the east, which is in the redevelopment area land use, just the one in your package was white. Now, you'll see it's all red up over there. This is the, this area right over here is all whited out in your original packet, because it is a redevelopment land use, and we just merged the two land uses to be able to show up on the same, same page for everybody.
What is the green right across the street to the east?
I believe it's Potential Park. I think that's, as a matter of fact, let's take a look here on the staff report. I believe that's right. It's not labeled on there, but it's. Parks and Recreation.
All right. Are there any questions of staff?
I have one. This is asking for 80 units per acre. What's currently permitted, I mean, I'm not, per acre, 80 unit, what's currently permitted for residential at that point as far as density?
Well, it's split. There's a, half of the property is the BR2.
Right.
And that permits up to 40 units per acre.
Okay.
The other half is the multifamily, and I believe that's 20 units per acre.
So, permitted would be, if you went with that, would be 60?
No, no.
But this is 2.2 acres.
You kind of have to calculate the amount of area that's, yeah.
Okay, so. Okay. I saw 2.2 acres, I was going, okay, 40 plus. Okay, all right. So, if you, with its current zoning, you could put up to 80?
Theoretically, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Actually, I meant to ask you, I think you indicated that if it was, was the height that it, it is proposed, I think you said that it should be 120-foot setback?
No, I said if it was, if it was 55 feet, I think it's 75 feet. If it was 55 feet, it would have to be 125 foot.
Wow.
Forever, I think it's for every foot higher than 55 feet, you add another inch to the setback, so you have to do the calculation up and then further out. So, the higher, the more setback is required.
So, you said 120, so the 120 would be the minimum, and you'd add a little if it goes higher.
Correct.
And that's shorter, so what would be?
What is it?
You, yeah.
I mean, what would it be based upon?
If it's, if it's one inch per, let's say we add another 25 feet on there, so it's approximately two feet, so you're adding, you know, another couple of feet of setback. So, it'd be 127 and a couple inches.
All right. Now, what is the setback on this that they're proposing?
The, the proposed setbacks, I've got them in here. They're.
It's on page three, I think.
Yeah, yeah. On page three of the staff report, it's right below the compatibility requirements. Proposed on the building is, it's a 220-foot setback. That's from Beach Street right now, so that's setback from, from Beach. From the back, which is the multifamily, that's going to be the 44 feet, sides 45 feet, and then the side street on Madison, adjacent to Madison, is 15.25 feet.
15?
15.
15, and it should be 120?
It has a.
It should be.
Should be. Should be, yes. Yeah, but I'm not sure how wide the property is, so I don't even know if, you know, that they'd even be able to make that 125 if that were a required setback for them.
Wow.
But the less the building is, the less the required, the less the height of the building, the less the requirement for the setback.
But it would almost have to be negative for, to handle 20 feet?
Well, I think 35 feet is a standard height that would be a standard setback.
Gotcha, okay.
Right.
All right, any other questions?
This is 72 feet.
Any questions?
72?
Yeah. Any questions?
With the current sewer system that's in place on that area, would it be able to handle the capacity of this building?
One of the technical requirements, when they go through the site plan, they have to demonstrate stormwater. They have to keep the stormwater onsite. They're going to have to demonstrate that they meet all of the code requirements for stormwater retention, and that includes anything that might overflow into the city's sewer system. So it's one of those things that we'd have to analyze later on when we go through a full site plan application.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can we hear from the applicant, please? And would you make sure that when you finish that you go over there and get one of those signed, please?
Good evening. My name is Stacy Bannick. I'm representing developer American Realty Development, and I'm here on behalf of the owner of the property as well, Ten Allison Lane. I did want to just quickly hand out some pictures here just to... Okay, well, Dennis went through a lot of the details here. I guess what I would like to do is briefly describe the proposed development. I'd like to describe the application process that's required for this product for us through state approvals. I do want to clarify some of the misconceptions of affordable housing. I'll do that as well. And then Mike is here as well, on behalf of the owners of the property, and he'll kind of discuss the history of the property as well. So first, as Dennis mentioned, we're proposing to build 80 units affordable. This is a senior development. It's for age 55 and up. Let's see here. The building that we're proposing to build is a mid-rise structure. It's concrete. The building is an L shape, as Dennis went through. This is a seven-story portion along Madison, and there's one-story portion that's kind of parallel to North Beach. On that one portion, that one, single-story portion, that's going to be where the, we basically put all the common areas and amenities. We provide a wide range of amenities for the residents. I could go through a bunch of them, but I'll just kind of summarize them here. We have, obviously, we have a pool, we have a shelf war court. In the units, for the, well, for the building, we have carded, secured entries, washer and dryers in every apartment. We have a large activity room, arts and crafts, a fitness center, a billiard room. We have a game room, a screen lanai. Lots of amenities. We can go through them, but I just want to kind of keep moving here. Let's see here. As I mentioned earlier, this is an affordable tax credit development. We are applying with Florida Housing Finance Corporation, which is the state, the state of Florida, to receive tax credits to build this development. In exchange for the tax credits, developer will require, be required to keep this development an affordable project for 50 years. Developer will hold and maintain this project during that 50 years. I would like to stress that this is not a Section 8 project. This is not a HUD project, and it's not a subsidized project. This is simply affordable housing development for seniors. Basically, the seniors that live here cannot make more than 60% of the county household median income. This gives the seniors in Daytona Beach, they're living on retirement and social security, a chance to live in a beautiful development where otherwise couldn't. As required by the city, we sent out a notice of public hearing for tonight's meeting. In the mailing, I included a separate letter inviting neighbors to one of our developments nearby to discuss and answer questions they may have. We met at a project that we built. It's called Madison Glen, located over in Ormond Beach, about six miles from here. I thought the meeting was a good idea because it would keep people, would get, tell people firsthand, you know, show them firsthand what we build, and give them the opportunity to see, you know, like landscaping our amenities that we have there. We had about 10 people show up. We discussed the project for about an hour. The neighbors seemed very receptive to the project, because I think they feel, as we do, that this project will help kickstart growth in the area, help improve the overall demographics and the property values. Last, just kind of want to go through, at the meeting, there were some questions, and I've heard, you know, through a couple emails, and I've heard things from the city questioning this project, because when people hear affordable projects, I guess they kind of have a different mindset. They think of, you know, Section 8 and HUD, and, you know, a lot of these developments are rundown. I was, attached these pictures here for you to see the kind of developments that we do build. This is the exact product we're proposing here. We just finished this one over in downtown Tampa. It's called Madison Heights. And if, you know, if you want to look through the pictures, you can see exactly where we are. I mean, very much, I mean, these look like condos. And we think it would be great for this area. And everything that I showed to the neighbors seemed that they liked the product as well. There might be some here tonight didn't come to the meeting, and I, you know, like the opportunity for them to be able to see this. So real quick, I'll just go over, you know, the main questions that I had heard is, you know, is this a subsidized project? And again, I'll emphasize, no, this is not. Somebody had asked, will this development be paying property taxes? That seemed to be a question. And yes, this is, it's a tax credit job, but the tax credits are given to developer. This is kind of a way that they're able to build these products. It's not property taxes. We will be paying property taxes, just the same as other property owners in the area. And then some other people had it asked. They seem to be worried that if we get approved of this project, that we would go and we would build something else. I think Dennis had mentioned that this is RPUD. We are tied to specific building type. Anything we want to do other than that, we have to come back and do this whole process again. And then we also have, with Florida Housing Finance Corporation, when we apply to the state, we have to send this information to them as well. Exactly how many units, the exact type of building that we're doing, so we can't deviate from that whatsoever. So, you know, once, if we are approved by Florida Housing for this, and then, you know, the rezoning goes through, and we do move forward this project, this is what we built. We won't build anything else. So just kind of wanted to emphasize that. That's about all I have for now. I'd like to see if anybody has any questions. Again, I do have Mike here to speak on behalf of the property history, you know, what it went through to get to the point where it is. I don't know if you'd like to talk to him now, or if you want to wait till after we hear from other people.
Yes.
I was just curious, what's the square footage of the average apartment?
The average, we have, these are one and two bedrooms. The one bedrooms are about 560 square feet, and the two bedrooms about 874.
Are there any other questions of the applicant? Anyone?
Yeah, I have a question. Like, if it's not, you said it's not Section 8, and it's not subsidized rent, then how do the people qualify if they were to move in there? They have to be under 55 and older?
Right.
Then they have to have a threshold on their income?
Yeah, we have, they take the average median income, household income. There's requirements that we have to provide the housing to them. They basically, they can't make too little, and they can't make too much. But basically, the max cap on it is 60% of the median income. So if they make more than that, they won't qualify to move into our development.
Okay, so every apartment could be a different rent base?
It could, yes. But not more than 60% of the median income, so get that figure.
Are there any other questions?
One of the questions I have is regarding variance that you're asking about the reduction in parking space. You said you had some other statistics or some other studies?
We do. In your packet, we have historical data that we collected from previous projects. Let's see what page that's on. It's actually, it's an attachment, and that is Attachment B. And what we've used here is, you know, as an example, we have five, you know, these are almost identical projects. They're 55 and up, they're seniors. The only difference on these from what we're proposing is these are three- and four-story units. But it's the same demographic of people, and generally, if you look at the first page, it's kind of a summary of all that information. Generally, the requirement here will be, you know, if we were to take this project, the requirement would be, you know, we normally use historical, historically, would be about 63 cars, which is about, you know, 78%.
Okay.
And this is taken, again, you know, what we do is, we have our management company. They store data. They keep all this data, how many people, how many cars they have, the average age. All this stuff is stored, and we keep the information, and, you know, especially for things like this. We've done, you know, our last five projects, we've built, we've, I think, a lot, seems like a lot of the cities and counties are starting to implement for senior housing. They'll give a reduction in parking 40% majority of the time, or they'll just have a straight one-to-one. So this is pretty consistent with what the average, you know, city or county requires.
And looking at that page, Attachment B, page two, some of them weigh more than 60 or 80 parking space.
Well, that's because they have, sorry.
Communities...
Like lands down terrace on the bottom, that's 160 units.
Okay.
So...
The units, okay.
Yeah, it's based on an average. That's why they have more, because it's more, it's double the size of the...
Okay, so you just want my percentiles, okay.
So these are self-reported numbers from the management teams that have in different areas?
That is correct.
Yeah. Are there any other questions of the applicant?
I do have just one more thing, if you don't mind. Regarding the waivers, I just kind of wanted to kind of briefly talk about that. The, we just went over the parking reduction, so giving that information. The conceptual site plan versus final site plan, the only reason that we've requested this is because this is an application process that we're not sure we're going to get. It goes through Florida Housing, and unfortunately, it comes down to a lottery number. So, you know, we'll be competing against, say, for all of the Volusia County developers, there might be 10 or 12 developments. We'll be competing against them, and it comes down to a lottery number. So there is no guarantee that we would be able to proceed this year. We are hoping to do so, and we've had good luck in the past. Unfortunately, it does come down to that. But if we're not accepted this year, we will proceed for the next year, and so on, until, you know, this was able to work for us. So this is the reason why we've asked for this variance, is because coming up with a final site plan, you have to hire engineers, gets very expensive, whereas we have enough information, I think, right now, conceptually, to where the city is happy and comfortable with what we're proceeding to do. So that's the only reason that we've asked, you know, for that waiver. Of course, you know, if we're to proceed, immediately, we, our engineers come on board, they get on board with the city, and then we have to go through, you know, a final site plan approval process. And then the building height, if you can turn to the site plan, I just want to show you one thing real quick. Let's see where I have that. That is in your Attachment A, which Dennis had up on there earlier. You can kind of see the layout here, how we have it. The concern, I guess, is, you know, with the requirement for setbacks, the, I have to be honest, we didn't know that they were using that small residential kind of across Madison Street as a requirement to meet the setback. We do understand that there is one house over on the left-hand side, which, you know, these are considered residential. We do have the opportunity, if we need to, if basically, you know, for some reason they're saying, you know, we can't make this work because of that, we can actually mirror this building where we put the parking on the west side and put the building on the other side to where we can meet that requirement for the setback to enable us to do 72 feet on the west. Now, again, on Madison Street, I would like to, I didn't get a chance to talk to Dennis about that, but we'd like to talk a little further. You know, that site, that setback, if we rotate the building, then you'll only have a single-story building over there, and I don't think it has the same requirement as the seven-story building, and therefore, the seven-story building could be pushed even closer to the, to the site, to the south. So I'll have to look at it and analyze a little further, but I think that we might be able to possibly even meet those requirements, so we don't have to ask for a variance for the building height. We would, obviously, we would like to have it designed the way it's shown, for the purposes of, when you come in through the entryway, you have your parking in kind of the front of the building. This was designed this way because, and along Madison, having the seven-story building along Madison, we thought would be best. But again, if it's something that the city says, you know, we would like to see you do this, and it's not going to go forward unless you do it, and the neighbors too, you know, we'll hear what they have to say, but we can do that. I would like to offer that, so.
Are there any...
This meeting, this meeting you had with the residents?
Yes.
In Ormond Beach? They were of the neighborhood?
They were of the neighborhood, yes, they were, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Do you project any issues with the trees? It seems like there's a lot of trees on the property.
Well, we looked at the trees. A lot of them are pines, and I don't know how many of them will qualify as actually historical-type trees. We'll have a tree surveyor go out there, and, you know, we will conform with whatever the requirements are with the trees, so. To be honest with you, I don't, we don't have, there's no tree analysis yet. We haven't gone that far, because this is still conceptual.
Okay.
So that is code, you have 80-unit apartments, and you only have one, two, three, four handicap spots?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that meets the requirements, yeah. It's, I think it's, I think you only need two for every 75. Actually, that's in your packet, too, the requirement for handicap parking.
And the other question I have was, as far as the reduction of the parking spaces, I was thinking on holidays, this parking lot might be kind of full. Would the, the area around it support parking on the street for visiting residences?
We haven't looked into off-street parking. There is currently now off-street parking, but again, you know, I know during the holidays, sounds, we have, a lot of these residents don't, won't have cars. We haven't had any problems that we're aware of with, because we think about that as well, but I mean, you know, as far as guest parking and employees are there during holidays and so forth, we haven't had any problems in the past.
Okay, any other?
Well, these other communities, do they have a lot more transit systems or what?
Well, no, they're generally, they're generally same. We have, with Florida Housing, we have proximity requirements where we have to be within a certain distance of grocery store, pharmacy, transportation bus, you know, that type of thing. So this meets all those requirements, so you generally have a lot of people that won't use their cars.
All right. Any other questions? Anyone? Don't forget to fill us out.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Does anybody in the audience like to speak in favor of this issue? In favor? Yes, ma'am, come forward.
Yes.
Or whoever, no, come forward, please.
Before we get into that, I wanted to, we're going to hand out, we received an email from the association that we told them we would put in the package, and hand that out right now.
And with those of you who are going to come forward, would you just come forward and sit here, so we save a little bit of time? Yes, ma'am, would you state your name and address, please?
Yes, Carolyn Lehman. My husband and I own a business at 112 Madison Avenue, which is directly across the street from this property. I'd like to say, first of all, anything you put there would be better than what we have. We've had our business for 15 years. We are open to whatever goes there. I had two questions, the subsidized rent, and they've answered that. The other question is the parking. There is not a lot of parking. We have only five employees, so we do not require a lot of parking. Will this parking be inside, outside, or where is there parking?
I guess we have to ask outside. You want to answer that? It's all outside, sir.
Outside? Okay, that's all I needed to know. And the other thing that concerns me is, the gentleman referred to a neighborhood meeting. As I said, we are directly across the street, and we don't, weren't aware of a neighborhood meeting.
Okay. We, we sent out public notices, which, you know, we had to have certified receipts, to all the residents within 500 feet, and this letter was included with the certified letters. and it was, you know, it's just basically talking about where we're in the meeting, what it was, and so forth. I'm not sure, I'm not sure why you didn't get it.
Well, I'm not either.
I don't have an answer to that, I apologize, but we were given a list, basically, the way it works is Volusia County, they give us a list of all the neighbors within 500 feet, businesses, its residents, and everyone. We sent certified letters through the city, they have copies of the certified letters that we sent out, and the certifications and everything. So, again, I can look and find, and see, I'm not sure what happened.
Okay, well, and that's okay, I just, I would like to be included in any meetings.
Oh, okay.
We've been there 15 years, we have watched that area. I'm sorry, but it was a cesspool, and now it's clean, there's nothing left but trees, and we would welcome any development to come into the area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
Would you please complete the green form to make sure we?
Yes, ma'am.
Did she do it? Are you all right?
Just a minute now. Did she already sign one?
Okay.
Mine, I, you have, you have mine.
You did, okay.
Jean Spiny at 162 North Street. I'm also with the Neighborhood Watch Group. I was invited. The reason those people were invited was they were not within 500 feet. So, I did go, and I did tell one person, and then, when we did have our Neighborhood Watch Group, I told them about it. And unfortunately, I'm probably the only one that's for it. Anything you do to our neighborhood, our property value, I'm a full-time real estate agent, our property value is awful. We need something new in our neighborhood. We have a lot of old houses, but the neighborhood, because of code, Daytona Beach Code, our houses are being all fixed up, a lot of people are buying for second homes, so I would welcome something new in our neighborhood.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much, ma'am. Does anybody else like to speak in favor?
Hello, my name's Mike Oliver, 558 West New England Avenue. I guess now would be your.
Would you make sure that you, oh, you got it.
Yes, sir. I'm about halfway through it.
Oh.
I will finish it, though, I promise. I'm actually the applicant, and I represent the ownership of the property. I don't know if now is the best time, so clearly, I'm in favor of the project as the contract seller. I don't know if now is the best time for me to discuss what we've been through in the last, say, 18 months on this property or not.
Well, you can say it quickly, but I mean, it doesn't apply to what we're, what we're doing here, but if you would want to just tell us quickly what has happened.
Yeah, well, so, in other words, Stacy's presentation is, time is over. I was going to speak as a part of the presentation, but I would, if I could take a few minutes, okay. We purchased this property through a tax deed sale about 18 months ago, and because the previous owner had neglected the property for many, many years, had not paid his real estate taxes for three or four years, and it was an investment for us, an investment that we were going to take a dilapidated mobile home park, frankly, and kind of redo it and run it as a mobile home park, maybe for several years, until this area was more ripe for development, because in our opinion, at this point in time, it just, it just wasn't. Once we got ownership of the property and really got inside and saw the conditions, we, took us a few months, but we realized, along with the city staff, that it wasn't going to be possible to, to bring this thing up to code. It was a very difficult financial decision for us, so we started to negotiate with the city. The last time I was up here was in front of the city council to negotiate the $315,000 code enforcement fine down to a number that would be palatable for us to move forward and maybe recoup our investment, and I think the city council saw the benefit of us, instead of spending money on a violation, to, if we would agree to it, clear the property of all these dilapidated homes, and we did. It cost us about $60,000 to do that. For that commitment, they reduced the fine down to $30,000, and we really appreciated that. The decision to do that was, was a difficult one, because we could have brought 30 newer homes to this site and run it, just like our neighbor, Mr. Sebastian is currently doing. For how long? I don't know, but it was a decision not everybody agreed on, but we decided to get rid of the mess. And, I mean, when I say mess, the lady prior to me talking about the cesspool, there literally was plumbing issues to the extent where there was raw sewage on the ground in two or three places. The electrical code violations were, I mean, there was no place for anybody to live. We, in addition to the other costs that we incurred, we paid 14 or 15 people several hundred dollars each, and for them to have money to go buy, or pay for a down payment on a deposit on apartment, things of that nature. So, we did all these things because the city was supporting us. So, I just wanted to kind of let you guys know what we've been through in this. I frankly didn't think we'd find a developer, especially with the kind of product that ARD has, Stacy and his group, so soon, but luckily, we did. Hopefully, this does work out. I think it'd be a great, instead of this project 18 months ago being the centerpiece or the ground zero for, you know, the decline of this area, it could become the cornerstone of the development, the redevelopment, that I think the city would like to see there. And so, I'm here for any more questions you might have, but that's, that's what I think about the, you know, the potential that this project could do for this area as a whole.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions?
I do have one question. We're talking about the parking because of the size of the building, and why couldn't it be four stories?
The economics of this site do not work for a four, a four-story building would, maybe, they could do 50, 50 units? I mean, here's the deal, most apartment complexes, and I have been a developer before, I've never developed apartment complexes, if you go to a garden-style apartment complex, they'll say, "Look, the critical mass is about 250 units." You'll never see a garden-style apartment complex, it's 100 units, because it just doesn't work. These guys have found a way, frankly, out of all the tax credit developers in the state, and I know several of them, to find a way to do an 80-unit project. The one in Ormond Beach, I think, is 120 units. Their Tampa site, which is a beautiful building that they just finished, or just finishing now, it's 85, it's 80 units on 1 and 1/2, 2 acres? 0.92 acres. And it's just, in order to go vertical with block like they do, I mean, a lot of these vertical guys are using sticks, you know, lumber. In order to build a quality building like that, you just need a critical mass, and that's, it's just that simple. You can't get 80 units in four stories. You just can't get there. I mean, now, we, keep in mind, we already have a straight zoning BR2 that allows 40 units per acre on half the property. And there's no, I mean, there is some building restriction, there's a practical building height restriction, but it's not 70, 75, 72 feet. And we could come in and build 40 units of the acre on that piece and go to 80 feet, and I believe, Dennis, you might be going to correct me here, but I don't know if there's a basis for denial, but you could, maybe you can correct me on that.
From part of that question.
Sure. My, my statement, and I just want to make sure I'm accurate, because I don't want to mislead anybody, is that our current BR2 zoning allows 4 units per acre. I think the 75-foot building height is, there's no restriction on that, correct?
There's two different things that we're looking at, though. We're looking at the built, the setback that's associated with the BR2, but then there's also the compatibility when you're near the single family, and that's, that's what the waiver would be, for the single family, because of the proximity to the single family. If the single family weren't there, then it wouldn't be an issue.
Right.
So, that's, that's what the issue.
Got you. So, some of the things we're asking for, we already have an entitlement for others we need a variance for, but to answer your question on the, why couldn't it be four stories? It's a, it's a critical mass issue. The economics don't work with only, say, 4 or 50 units.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you very much. Now, does anybody else who would like to speak in favor? And does anybody who would like to speak against?
Yes, sir.
Yes, and would you come forward, so we can get you up here next time?
My name is John Anderson, I'm the president of the Uptown Neighborhood Watch. Tracy, our meeting was last Thursday night, you met Norman Beach on Wednesday night. That's a 24-hour difference, we were not notified. That building will affect our entire neighborhood. That building's going into a floodplain area. An entire street down on Beach Street floods every time it rains higher than my ankles. We were not consulted, we were disrespected and not consulted, and I find it highly rude for you to stand up here and say, "All the neighborhood people were contacted."
Let's not do that. Why don't you talk to us up here, please?
Okay. Another thing, the zoning issue. We have been trying to get our homes rezoned to single-family dwellings, and every time somebody comes in here with a new cookie cutter design, they come in wanting a rezoning permit to get some kind of stuff rezoned. I was in here last month, I'll let everybody know, I'm a few years away paying my home off. I can't rezon. I know what this trailer park went through, and I know the ramifications that went down there, and it wasn't on the goodness of anybody's heart that they decided to clean it up. It was when the bills got so high, they couldn't pay it. And I'm telling you right now, I know a Marina district that wants to go in across the street there. There's a place right down the street from me, was doing everything good with rental stuff. Now, you drive by that place, there's trash, clutter, and people hanging out everywhere. It's going to happen in this place, like it happened in every other place. You're talking a floodplain, we're going to put a swimming pool in, in a floodplain area, so people can go into flood and swim. This doesn't make any sense to me.
Okay.
I love this city, my neighbors love this city, and we love our neighborhood. We're not giving up without a fight.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, please.
Good evening, fellow volunteers. Wichi Kungdig, 718 Northwest Wild Olive. I'm speaking tonight to object to the Madison Cove project for the following reasons. From the start, it was bad form for the Uptown residents to have to go to Ormond Beach to learn about this project. The developers should have asked to come to an Uptown Neighborhood meeting. They are an active group that meets regularly. The developers are asking for too many waivers and exemptions. The height is totally inappropriate and will overshadow Uptown. Setbacks aren't met, parking is completely inadequate, and will negatively impact the neighborhood. Where is the full site plan? Where is the tree study? Are there any public benefits mentioned? I don't believe the history of the property has relevance. The developers knew what the zoning was when they bought the property. Are we, as a city, still operating under the assumption that we need to take anything as a project? With all that is happening in our city, I believe we can stick to a higher standard. Let's get down to what this project really is: low-income housing for the elderly. I have no knowledge that this particular spot needs this type of housing. It could go elsewhere. Our downtown already has the Melee, the Windsor, on the South Ends, and Central Baptist Tower close by. Do we really need to make this project the northern bookend in our attempt to revitalize downtown? Is this type of housing really part of our riverfront master plan on Marina District? What exactly is the tax situation? What exactly will rents be? 60% of median isn't very much. There are still too many missing numbers, in my opinion. As usual, our city, and especially this Uptown neighborhood, always bears the brunt of social services and low-income housing, so that other places can prosper. This neighborhood is pivotable, pivotal to downtown and the other river projects. This project will not help their housing values or great plans we have for downtown. We don't need to do this anymore. Developers are clamoring to get going on great projects. Please reject this low-income housing project on this site, there are other places for it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to speak against? Have you filled out a form?
Yes.
Okay.
I am Peter Garrett, I live at 734 Maldory Street. I am within the 500-foot area of that piece of property, and I just don't agree with it, and I've never been notified or anything. And this man asked about the sewer, and the answer from this fellow over here went into telling about the storm drains. He never did answer the sewer problem. When we had the hurricanes five years ago, seven years ago, all the sewer manholes overflowed, right? And there just isn't proper adequate sewer in the area now, and the height is way out of range. If they were going to put a three-story building down there, I would, might agree with it, because there's just too many variances.
Okay.
And the parking is a problem.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
My name is Robin Tomlinson, and I live at 153 Pierce Avenue. I am also opposed to building this facility on this property. As a resident, I would like to have something that would greater enhance our community. I don't feel like this low house, low-price housing would enhance anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, Diane Mintz, I'm at 152 Pierce Avenue, and I have to say, no, I don't like to see the seven-story building go up there, it's not the right area for it. We're a very nice community and working very hard, and I just don't feel this is the right project for that area, although we do need an improvement, and having that trailer park gone was a big improvement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
My name is Vasim Fakregian, and I'm a resident, not a resident, I have a business on 705 North Beach Street, and next door, 709 is mine also, which we are expecting in the future about the Marina thing, and this project, it's a little bit difficult for us. And as they were talking about the sewer thing, every time it rains, my shop will be full of water. I mean, that's the only thing that I can say.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to pass this notice around, so you all can be, how we were notified in the neighborhood.
To go to Ormond Beach, my name's Chris Don, I'm at 132 Pierce Avenue, and I'm an owner-occupied resident of the neighborhood. Just to get down to, to the waivers you're being asked, I have never in my life been to a planning board meeting where you're being asked to, to approve a plan development without a site plan. I mean, there's nothing to stop this after it's approved of changing, are we going to now change the, the footprint of the building to the front now, or are we going to keep it in the back where it's originally on what, what you're being proposed to do? If this deal doesn't go with your financing through the state of Florida, is the developer allowed to then still build the seven-story structure, but under another guise, possibly public housing, or could it be another seven-story condo project? Do we, do we have that as part of the agreement to, to have a full understanding of what you're agreeing to tonight? Okay? The other thing is, without the site plan or the tree survey, you saw in the aerial photograph that most of that property is covered with historic trees, okay? And you're going to agree tonight for a plan development that is not even offering any mitigation of those trees, because we just don't know, and you've got to work with the developer. And, I mean, if I were to go into business or try to do anything, you know, there are always rules, you know, to, to the game, and you're asking, you're being asked to break those rules in favor, like we need some kind of break, and you have nothing in writing or any guarantee that what you're agreeing to tonight is going to be changed in the future, and once you agree to it, you've agreed to it, they're not going to come back to you for anything at all, as far as what the land development code requires. Worst of all, what was also spoken of earlier was that most plan developments give some type of public benefit, and there is nothing being offered to the city or our community for this project going through, like park improvements for the neighborhood, street lighting on Beach Street, new sidewalks on Beach Street, which are definitely needed. This is, to me, what this plan development approval process is, is that in, in exchange for these three huge waivers you're being asked to give today, you're going to get something in return, and I want to know what those things are. Otherwise, this needs to be scrapped, because, like I said, the Marina District across the street is what our neighborhood is banking on for future development in our neighborhood, and we see a low-income project as actually competing with ruining that, because retailers will not want to go into that project because of the demographics. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Can Dennis come up and, because he stated some stuff about the site plan?
Yeah, thank you, thanks very much, I appreciate that. And I just wanted to correct a couple of things. First off, the site plan, the site plan, the PD plan, we've had a number of applications come through with just the PD plan, without the full technical requirements of a site plan. The applicant is required to submit a site plan. Later on, they'll need to come back and meet all technical requires, requirements of the site plan. Anything they don't meet, that they're going to have to modify that plan, that's going to go back through this process as an amendment to this PD, coming back to the planning board, back back to the city commission. So, any changes that they make, you know, the, the question of, what if they move the building over here to over there? That's a major change. That's gonna require a full amendment to the PD, which is gonna come back to the planning board, come back to the city commission. So, you're gonna see those changes. They're taking the chance that this is a plan that's gonna work, and they're gonna be able to make all of the technical requirements work. That's the challenge. That's, that's the risk they're taking to move this through. If they can't do it, it's a full amendment to the PD, and they're gonna go back through the process again, back here to the planning board, back to the city commission. Regarding any trees, uh, I know Chris mentioned there are a bunch of historic trees out there. I'm not sure there's a bunch of historic trees out there, but we'll find out if there's a bunch of historic trees out there. City Commission is the only body that can approve the removal of the historic trees. If there are historic trees out there and they are required to do a tree survey, they will be required to go to the city commission to get permission to remove the historic trees. So, it's not as if what you're gonna be doing is giving them permission to clear this whole place down. They've got all of the rules and regulations they still have to comply with as they go through this process.
I think that answered some of those things that have come up. Yes?
Is there, is there a requirement to provide a public benefit?
Technically, there is not a requirement to, to have a public benefit, but it talks about the weighing of, um, the benefit of a project versus the, uh, the waivers that they're requesting. It's a very subjective type of a, um, a process. Uh, I, the applicant can come over here, and he can generate. He could probably tell you some of the public benefits that are associated with this project. I think he's already mentioned them as he started talking about doing his presentation. Those are legitimate public benefits that we've had people, developers, use as benefits to a public process as they go through the PD process, so.
Well, if this is, uh, if this was approved, assuming that there was the 55 and older population coming in, and that changed, would there still be the seven stories and the parking requirement? Is it tied to who moves into those places?
Yeah, the, the PD agreement is specifically says only 55 and older. Any change to that in the PD agreement requires an amendment to the PD and require to go back to the city commission for approval. So, they're locked in at 55-plus with those parking spaces for the, for the aliens.
And income levels? Locked into income levels? Cause that affects the parking.
I don't think income levels are locked into the PD agreement.
So, let me, uh, the applicant was provided information from our housing, um, emery counts, uh, relative to, um, our ability to, uh, provide them the, um, um, I guess we have to subsidize that application to go to the state, and he indicated that, um, they are committed to another project this year, and that they would not be able to be the support needed for that request this year.
But, you know, just one more thing that I wanted to point out. I heard a lot of discussion about the public meetings. Right now, the current code does not require a neighborhood meeting for these, these types of developments. The, the board, the planning board has made it a policy that they'd like to see those neighborhood meetings. The city commission has made it a policy they'd like to see those neighborhood meetings, but right now, there is no code requirement requiring those neighborhood meetings. The new code will have that requirement in place, and, and when we have that, then I don't have to go through this not a requirement speech, but it, but that's really the way it is. It is not a code requirement at this point. It is a policy, though, the city commission.
And we told them there was a neighborhood right across the street to meet with that group.
Correct.
Okay.
I've got a question.
Sure.
Why Dennis is still up here. Two apartment complexes that are down across from the city Marina.
Yeah.
Really? Now, those are 55 and older, right?
I believe they are, yes.
And are they, and they're, uh, like rent-controlled?
Those are subsidized.
Yeah, I can't, I can't speak on that. I'm not exactly sure. I do know that they're larger than, than seven stories.
I think one is, one is it.
Okay. The one that are across from the city Marina.
Yes.
Okay.
But aren't they, aren't they really a different animal than this? As I understand it, he's, as I understand it, those are different types of housing than what he's proposing essentially.
I know at least one of them is not full part.
Well, I-
I think both of them are.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, would you like to-
I just, I just wanted, I just wanted to speak about the, the public meeting. I was obviously wrong, but I thought that having it at, um, one of our projects, you know, so the people could come and see what we build, uh, I thought that would be a benefit. Uh, that was the reasoning. I did contact, um, Dennis had given me the name of someone to contact over the city. I did contact, leave her a message, um, to try and contact their, uh, the neighborhood, uh, and I wasn't able to get ahold of them. It was a short time, a period where we had to get this letter out, so I felt like I did the best I could with that. Uh, I did offer to meet with them. I found out that they did send an email to the city. Uh, I offered on Monday to meet with them. They said that they didn't have the time, they couldn't meet, uh, so here we are now. So, just one.
Thank you. All right. I'm gonna close down public discussion. Board?
I'm gonna jump in here. You know, um, I'm familiar with the neighborhood. My aunt's office used to be on Fairview, and she lived there. We never had even a key for the door. And I, and lived there for 30 years, so I know the, the neighborhood. I think this community has struggled. I know the people who own homes in the area struggled, and I think this mobile home park and the other ones have just, it's been very difficult. Where I sit, quite frankly, the waivers, the parking does not concern me because I think that that's, well, I don't think they'll have problems with parking. And, um, I think the site plan requirements will be met. I will say, when I looked at the site itself, I thought it was a very intensive development. That was one of the reasons I wasn't concerned about reducing the parking, quite frankly. And when, I'm sorry, I didn't remember your name, but, uh, when you mentioned even changing the orientation of the buildings, I looked at this L and thought, well, the seven-story, if it were interior to the parcel and have the one-story facing Madison Street, might change the impact on the neighborhood a little bit. That, I thought, was a reasonable change in orientation to help diminish the impact on the residential. So, I'll just, speaking for myself, the intensity of the development and the setbacks concern me because I think the neighborhood struggles. And I do think we have people who own and keep up their homes there and would like to have any help that they can have to help it improve. I believe that this will be good. I really do. My experience and what I have seen in this kind of development has been that it had, it has been an improvement and, but that would be my concern, is the intensity of the development with the setbacks.
Okay. Yes?
Yeah, I, I think that it would, I think it'll be a good project just because it's the 55 and older people that would be living there. That would give us more stores, more places that people, that they have to shop, they have to have things like that. I like the idea of flipping the building, and, um, I think that that would be a big improvement and get the parking lot back there and the house, so. Could you put back up on the screen, perhaps, this layout and tell us what you were talking about exactly so I can understand? Moving the parking and, and-
Well, I, I was even thinking switch, flipping the L and leaving the parking where it was, but, you know, I, cause I'm concerned about trees.
About the single story next to Mason and the seventh.
But, you know, that, I'm not the layout person, but I'm concerned about the trees and the intensity.
Okay. Uh, I don't know. I guess they can bring it up. Okay. Well, where you see the yellow and the green, uh, the, the way it works, because the size of, the dimensions of the parking, the dimensions of the building, this literally can be mirrored.
Mm-hmm.
So, you take the, pointer. Basically, yeah, if you drew an access point down in between the parking and the building, and then flipped it, you mirrored it. So, now your parking's on the left-hand side. The only thing is that we won't have access, which is fine with us, but we won't have access on Beach Street, the access to the development would be on Madison. That would be the only change that would happen here if we flipped and mirrored the building.
Does that change the traffic impact on Madison? I'm thinking of-
No, um, the traffic analysis was included, um, Madison and Beach, so. I don't, I mean, it's the same, it'll be the same distance from the light, you know, their, their traffic requirements are how many trips there are daily and then how they are far there from the light. This is actually, would actually be a little further from the light, so I, I don't think there would be any issues with that.
So, actually, the, the seven stories would still be next to Madison as you have it?
I think it should stay on Madison, but if they're, and again, we'll have to look at that with the requirement of the, I guess what they're calling the, Dennis, you had mentioned that the residential over there on Madison, on the north side of Madison?
North side to the west.
Yeah, we'll have to look at that, and then we should probably, so after you mirror it, and then mirror it again so that the yellow part is on the south side of the site, but, um, you know, I mean, personally, I think if, if we could make it work and get approval, we would like to keep, keep it along Madison, the seven-story portion. I think it fits there with, uh, you know, with what's across the street. Could you just be a better place for it?
Are you saying to leave it like it is or to mirror it?
No. Mirror it, definitely, yes. But then, I guess the question was, can, at that point, can you mirror it one more time and then put the yellow portion along, um, the mobile home park side of the property rather than on Madison? It would increase your setbacks from, you know.
Mm-hmm.
That's what I thought you were talking about, Pat.
Well, I, you know, I, I was just looking at having that seven-story building adjacent in the set, so, um, but that, that would work for me. I, I just really had felt like if we could lessen the intensity, because I think the scale of Madison is also, is a really narrow street, and, and Beach Street does have more other intense development on it. So, that was what I was looking at, thinking of the residential, and also even if they're not adjacent, just the neighbor, the nature of that neighborhood. If you, if you had offered that as an option, I think that might lessen the impact on the neighborhood.
I'll have to talk to Dennis about, you know, procedurally, how that they would, you know, do that.
As far as switching it now, then coming back?
Switching it now before, before a city council meeting.
Possible.
That's up to the board. That was when I looked at it, the intensity.
Well, again, we, we offered that. If, if the city will, will allow that, we will definitely address that, so.
I have, I have several issues with this. Having lived on Madison Avenue for about 12 years and traveled this end of the street, I know the water issue firsthand. And I've heard about, tonight, I've heard about the sewage problem. We heard it once before. Uh, I know for a fact, having lived and traveled that twice a day for over 12 years, I know what it's like, and these individuals did not exaggerate as far as when it rain, heavy rain. It's terrible. Ankle-deep water, without a doubt. I'm concerned about the sewage. I'm concerned about the drainage. Uh, I'm concerned about putting that there, being a part of the downtown Blue Road Redevelopment Committee. When we're talking about building that Marina, putting that senior citizen tower there, it leads me to think there might be a problem with the building and the work that they've done in develop, in the development of that area. So, I'm very hesitant about rushing to a vote on this because there's some items. We say they, they won't need the number of apartments require, um, parking spaces required. Well, there's a reason for two parking spaces. I cannot see cutting parking spaces in half. I'm, I'm just one, and I only have one vote on this committee, but I just cannot see cutting the number of parking spaces if you're gonna have that seven-story high-rise saying that they won't need but one car because there will be others that need, there will be individuals that have more than one car. And then I'm concerned about the financing. It's not secure. We haven't, we got too many ifs in this. And personally, when you got a lot of ifs, it leaves room for a lot of confusion in the long run. I feel that we're not ready to vote on this tonight. I really do.
I have an issue with the parking. Uh, I live, I live in a condominium. Uh, we have, uh, you know, a lot of elderly in our condominiums, and this actually is less than one for one. This is like point six or point seven. Uh, I don't think there's gonna be that many that don't have a car, and also what I've found is the visitors. All these people that they, they have their kids come over, their families come over, they're, they're, they, we have a lot of guest parking spots, and they get filled up all the time. So, I just, I know what's gonna happen, cause my daughter lives in Atlanta, she lives in a, a place like this, and the parking's all over the streets. And we're running all the way up and down the streets, find, trying to find a place to park. And then the other residents don't have any place to park. So, I, I think you're really asking for down the road a, a real impediment for this community to develop as it's, as it's heading in.
But it was 80 units and 80 parking spaces.
Yeah, but if you look at, how many is for staff? And how many?
Two for staff, 15 for guests and the balance.
And then there was four head staffs.
Um, as far as staff, we only have one manager that runs this. It's a, it's an 80, 80 units. We have one manager, and then we have one part-time maintenance company or maintenance personnel. So, you, you have two people. Um, we, we, and again, we, we've built a lot of these, and historically, we, we don't have any problems with it because the average age of, um, the tenants here are about 69 years old. Um, a lot of them don't have cars. It's just, I mean, historically, that's just the way it is. I, I understand what you're saying. We don't wanna build, uh, something that, you know, if, if it was an issue and, and we thought it was an issue, we wouldn't build it. We want people to be happy there. We want it to be full of tenants. It's how that we make money. So, we're not gonna build a development where if they need 130 spaces, and we're only gonna give them 100 just because we're gonna put a project there. It's not gonna happen. We, we need for this property to perform. And, you know, Florida Housing has certain requirements. Uh, we even have to meet these requirements. They're very stringent, and, uh, I'm just telling you on behalf of us, historically, we don't have any problems with one-to-one parking.
I understand that, but I also see in this, when you look at the use of the, the land there and the issues that they already have in drainage, you're losing a lot of percolation and drainage that is occurring there right now.
You're right.
This is being totally used by the buildings and the parking lots and the pools. It's all gonna be running off.
No, I understand.
It's gonna be an additional problem.
We, we have a couple of options that we're looking at with acquiring, uh, adjacent property for, um, possible overflow of storage. So, these are things that we are going to be looking at, and, and our engineers will be calculating this. I mean, we have to have approvals from, from Southwest Law Department, from the city. You know, everybody has to have these approvals. Um, I mean, we can't go forward without this. So, uh, it will be analyzed to death. Uh, calculations will be there, and again, we won't be able to move forward if we don't meet those.
And I do like what this gentleman said. You know, when waivers are given, I think the city needs to look at the neighborhood and see what is given back to them. Instead of just being done for what can make this property work, if we're giving waivers and we're having, you know, very disparity in, in building heights and everything else, they're not getting any benefit. I don't see the neighbors are really gaining anything.
Well, one of the things they were worried about, well, if we don't build there, nobody builds there, then the neighborhood's not gaining anything at all, in, in my opinion. Um, we are, well, I think what we're proposing is only good for the neighborhood. I can't see how it hurts the development, I mean, the, the neighborhood and the community whatsoever. Um, we, we are offering, you know, with, with our, our rents how they are, we're, like, as I mentioned earlier, we're offering seniors that normally can't afford this. They're gonna, you know, a seven-story building, they're gonna have fantastic views of, of the intercoastal there, uh, of surrounding sites. We're gonna give them a property that's, I mean, they look like condos. They really, really do. I mean, we're, I'm biased to this product because, you know, we design it, we build it, and I think it's a fantastic product, and, uh, I almost wish I could take you all to Tampa and let you see and talk to the residents there and see the neighbors and see what it's done for the community there. Um, I, I only speak of this because it's, I know it's positive, and I know it'll be a good thing, so.
Well, the only other thing I have to say to that is, we're trying to revitalize this area, and if they are so strapped for living expenses, they're not gonna really benefit the community and their expenditures. So, we already have a lot of these where the people aren't shopping, they aren't spending, they're, they have no money, so it's not gonna provide any benefit. If they develop, do that Marina project down there, those businesses are gonna want people to come in there, and these guys are not gonna be shopping there.
Right. Well, the, the state does analysis, you know, all over through Flor, Florida. You have what's an area, we're probably familiar with these, it's called a QCT, it's Qualified Census Track. These Qualified Census Tracks are based off of poverty and the need for the area for affordable housing, and we are in a QCT here for this site. So, the state does a lot of analysis on this, and they see the areas where it is required and it's needed, and it's showing that it is needed here over in, in Daytona Beach. I understand that you guys have a few senior developments, and there are some affordable projects in the area. A lot of those affordable projects are for families, so the seniors don't have as many options as they do for the families.
I have a question for Dennis. On the Dennis speaking, and I'm familiar with the flooding and stuff. What kind, does a development such as this get an exemption on impact fees, connection fees, stormwater, or any of that as part of their incentive package? Or will they be paying into any improvements?
I'm not an expert on impact fees, but I don't know about any waivers for impact fees. Rich, can you?
Yeah, our code does provide requirements for benefits for affordable housing projects.
For impact fees?
Yes.
So the, any improvements that would be needed in this area on stormwater and/or wastewater collection would not necessarily be funded through this project? That they would not be contributing toward those improvements?
Sounds like that could be a possibility.
That's a question.
This project, while it would be allowed to get all of the Land Development Code incentives for affordable housing, it wouldn't, as Emory indicated, there isn't going to be support for writing a letter to have this compete with the other project that they've already voted to commit. So, but the other incentives that are in the Land Development Code, impact fee waivers, that kind of stuff, would be allowed for this project.
So they would, I'm sorry, they would get impact fee waivers?
Yes, I'm not sure that it's 100%, but yes, affordable housing projects do get subsidies.
So I, that, this area is ripe for capital investment, you know, in those improvements? Okay.
Basically, the way it works is, with Florida Housing, our applications, we have to have what's called a local government contribution. And that has to be from, normally it's from the county, but Volusia County has specifically separated Daytona Beach from that. So I spoke with Emory, and they have a project moving forward. So he said that the funds that they have are only going to be available for this city project and not for our project. So we wouldn't, with the impact fee, we can get local government contribution in several different ways. If it would be from the Community Development Director or from housing, they generally, what they do, a lot of times what they do is they do a loan, it'll be a zero-interest loan or a grant. We do have an option to do impact fee waivers up to whatever the requirements are by Florida Housing. In this case, for Volusia County, it would be $20,000. And so we wouldn't specifically be asking for impact fee waivers. We have a lot of different options that we could do. This could be done in the form of a billing permit. You could just delay the billing permit fees that are required for this. That is one option. They have several options, but they have to be approved by the city. And as we understand right now, the city is in the position where they're not going to be approving anything for us, for this development or any other development besides what the city has going right now because it's a competition. The city has a project going that they want to go forward, that they want completed. We have what's called a lottery system. And if we, if they give us that local government contribution, then we are directly competing for that lottery number. So the city, not saying the city's going to get this project because they have to do the exact same thing we do. They have to apply, and it comes down to a lottery, and out of those 10 or 12 Volusia County developers, if the city gets it, it's unfortunately luck. But if I did speak with Emory, and he said that if they did get it this year, if they were lucky enough to get it and they would proceed, he would definitely approve us for next year.
But, but the question is, with or without the lottery, with or without those other tax dollar incentives, does this, will this development contribute toward those capital improvements?
It will.
In the process of the development approval process.
Sorry. Impact fees, you know, for sewer, for water, whatever the impact fees are going to be, they vary from, I don't know exactly what they are here in the city, but I know that they're not going to be, they're going to be much more than $20,000. And all we would be requesting is $20,000. And it doesn't have to be in the impact fees. It's going to be whatever the city wants to give us. Again, it could be a loan, a grant.
Yeah, it's on the fixture counts of the plumbing, most of it. The sewer's on the fixture count of the building.
Well, yeah, that's how they come up with their fees. The impact fees are based off of the amount of fixtures, correct. But again, this has to be in the city's plan as far as whether they want to give us impact fee credit or something else. So I guess to answer your question is, we're not looking to get impact fee credits. We're looking to get whatever local government contribution the city is willing to give us, whether it's that or something else. But it wouldn't be for the full amount. It's only, in the case for Volusia County, it's only $20,000. So, and impact fees can, we've paid impact fees for developments like this in excess of almost three-quarters of a million dollars in impact fees.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions?
No, just a broad discussion. Far as my concern is, again, is the amount of waivers being asked. And again, my concern is the reduction in parking space. How long would you have a seven-story building, and what does that do, the shadow for the buildings around it, time of day and so forth? So I personally have some concerns about this, personally. And I've been to some of the other high-rises and getting parking space or going to visit folks, sometimes a challenge, you know, trying to find parking on the street and so forth. So that is, that is one of the things that I am most concerned about for this project.
Yeah, and my concern is going to be the, what we talked about before is the flooding. As you said, we're taking a lot, putting a lot of concrete down, so we're not going to get any kind of perk there. So, you know, it's an older neighborhood, and I think in Daytona, we're kind of playing catch-up because we have such an old area, and we're trying to go back in and develop it. And I don't know what kind of impact, if we start flooding this area worse and the citizens start screaming, now we've got to generate revenue to try to fix this problem, and the building's already there. You know, if we can foresee that there is going to be a problem, then now might be the time to try to pull up that street and do whatever we need to keep the flooding. I can't see how the flooding's going to get any better by this building. If it's bubbling up when it rains now and it's ankle-deep, it's going to be maybe double ankle-deep. I mean, it's just, I just think we just really need to be careful. And then we're talking about another development of 3,000 homes, impact on our sewers. I mean, this is a lot to really think about now because we're an older community and we've got a lot of old infrastructure in this area. I mean, I do like, I like the project, I like the building, I think it'd be nice, but I don't know what would it do for the, you know, the impact would be.
Well, I don't think we should think that the city's going to be able to make any major change. Actually, I'm using, actually, I'm using Orange Avenue as my, really as my criteria for that. How many, how many years have we been after that? It's been a mess. So I don't, that I don't think is going to get solved until I think it's down the line.
Yeah.
Of course, I hate for that to be involved in the decision we make because it really, that's a side issue that really needs to have been fixed a long time ago. It doesn't have to do with this building going up that's causing it. It's been there.
But we don't want to add to it either.
No, I agree. I agree. Board, it's up to you all. I'm sorry, I closed down all the, no, I closed down all the.
Make a motion.
All the public discussion.
Resoning Residential Plan Unit Development, RPUD, DEV 2014-122 Madison Cove Apartments, RPUD.
I have a motion.
You have a second?
Okay, just a second. All right, Mr. Hurt made the motion, so I'm going to put him down as yes. Mr. Moore?
I'm sorry, we had a motion and a second.
Yes.
I'm sorry, did you want a discussion?
Oh, no, just because they make a motion doesn't necessarily mean their vote's yes, so.
Oh, excuse me.
It always has to be an affirmative.
Okay, excuse me.
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
No.
I'll go no. Mr. Hoitzma?
No.
Mr. Neal?
No.
Mr. Barhu?
No.
Mr. Harper?
No.
Mr. Wright?
No.
Okay, you have your answer. So we had. No, it did not. I'm sorry, did it count? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine to one. So our recommendation would be.
Eight to one. Eight to one, yes. Eight to one. Eight to one denied.
It would be nice to be.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, they need to do something on that parcel, but they're right about the flooding. They're right about the flooding and your impervious ratios will be, yeah. I think the only point I was going to try to make is that it's not that. Right, correct. That's right. You're right. You know, I've had this, I've had this kind of development adjacent to schools, and it isn't bad. People are always worried about flowing. It's a beautiful parcel where that neighborhood has struggled and fought such a battle. That's right. That's right. It's full of, yeah, yeah, yeah. Right. But then you, you know, you still, then you've got greater intensity, but if you don't have the capital money, then you couldn't manage the stormwater. All right, can we? Okay. Okay, can we get back to? Okay, we have agenda item number nine, which is site plan approval, DEV 2014-112 Masco Office Building. Okay, thank you. Can we hear from staff, please? Yeah, let me get them. Can we get that cleaned down?
He's falling down. He's falling down. Oh, he did fall.
Well, that's okay. We want to make sure. Pick him up. I wonder if we can just wait a minute before we go forward.
Sorry.
No, no, no.
My foot slipped on the sinkboard. By the way, I want to say sorry. That was all.
Same to you. Good night.
Hope you enjoyed the show.
Okay. All right, now we'll move forward.
Good evening. Rose Askew, planning with the City of Daytona Beach. This is a request by Joseph Hopkins, P.E., on behalf of Indigo Group, on behalf of Indigo Group, Inc., to approve a site plan for 20.96-plus-or-minus acres of land located on North Williamson Boulevard, approximately a quarter of a mile south of Dunn Avenue, to construct a 70,590-square-foot office building with parking and related onsite improvements. This slide shows the location of the proposed project. This is an aerial view of what the site looks like now. It's currently vacant and undeveloped. The current land use on the property, future land use is office transition. The zoning is RP Residential Professional. This is a closer view, aerial view of the site so that you can get a better feel of projects that are around it. This is the site with the proposed project overlaid to give you a understanding of what the project will look like once it's developed. And this is the actual site plan for the proposed project. The area in red is the proposed building and everything else around it are the other proposed improvements that will go along with the structure. Project details, the parcel is approximately 21 acres. The purpose of the, the proposed use is office. It's a phase development. This, this site plan we have now is for Phase 1, which is the 70,590-square-foot single-story building. Required parking is 233 spaces, and the applicant is proposing 332 parking spaces. These are elevations of the building. Currently, the elevations reflect a couple of parapet walls that are in excess of the 35-feet height that's allowed by the Land Development Code, and the applicant is going to address how he's going to correct that. This is the color rendering of what the site will look like once it's finished. Recommendation, staff recommends approval of the site plan for 20.96-plus-or-minus acres of land fronting on North Williamson Boulevard, approximately a quarter of a mile south of Dunn Avenue, to construct a 70,590-square-foot office building and associated site improvements. A majority vote of planning board members present and voting are required to approve this application. And this concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Are there any questions at staff?
Question. Just for my information, the building to the south of that property is what? What type of, is that housing or is that church? Oh, the church, okay. Ah, that's, that's, thank you.
But it's inside of the buildings, the use to the south is an industrial and commercial use, and the church is actually inside of there.
I understand. Yeah, I just trying to.
And I missed the list of waivers that were requested?
No waivers are requested.
I was just checking. Yes, can we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Joe Hopkins with the Performance Group at 100 Marina Point Drive here in Daytona. We're here before you because the project, it sees 20,000 square feet within the zoning district. As a provision in Land Development Code, we have to come before you for approval. Mr. Grego, as you mentioned, we aren't seeking any approvals, any deviations or waivers from the Land Development Code. The fact that our parapets are 39 feet and the code requires 35, we're in agreement to lower those parapets four feet. I don't believe it's going to substantially affect the architectural elevations that you see right now. It's the tip of the parapets are actually just a little bit higher than what we are allowed by code. We meet all our setbacks. We exceed all our setbacks. We exceed all our buffers. We exceed our parking. As you can see from the, from the dimensional, the impervious ratios, we're well under, on a 20-acre parcel of land, we're only developing about half of it. There are some land issues that we're contending with. We're working with the state and the federal government to resolve those, and also working with the City of Daytona Beach. To answer your question, the property to the south is actually a corporate office for Florida Power and Light. And there's a pretty strong buffer between us and them. We work very closely with the County of Volusia. Williamson Boulevard is county-maintained. We've had successive meetings with them. They've reviewed our traffic impact analysis. We're proposing some onsite and off-site improvements to deal with traffic impact, recognizing that we'll have some peak hour flow in the morning and the afternoon with going and coming between work hours. There's some right-of-way improvements, left turn and right turn lane improvements that are going to be installed as part of this. And other than that, we are straight code.
Okay.
If there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
Well, it's not so much a question, Mr. Hopkins. It's just a pleasure to see a project like this come forward with no waivers. And even, and I haven't heard this in a long time, where you do extend the code by a little bit and you're willing to come back into code.
We are so happy.
That's unusual for us to have someone like that bring a lot more of these projects forward.
Well, I would love to. And as a point of clarification, the property, when we initiated this application, it was owned by Consolidated Tamoca or Indigo Development. My client is actually Joe Fisher, or Joe Fisher's estate. And I've been before you successively with the Ocean Design Projects and several other key corporate entity projects. And the Fishers have purchased this property, and they are the, I don't want to say we're going to change the applicant at this point, but they're the entity that I work for. So it's a great corporate citizen. They've done some fantastic projects in this community. And currently, Masco is their tenant, and we hope that Masco will complete negotiations and be our tenant on this property as well.
We all hope Masco stays.
I agree.
This is wonderful. Does Masco plan on expanding into that Phase 2?
One of the, one of the provisions that we, we agreed to in the onset is to allow for a 15-square-foot expansion. Chances are, as I've worked with them in the past, we'll probably absorb the expansion in Phase 1. So we've gone ahead and included that in all our calculations, our stormwater calculations, our parking calculations, our site provisions. You can see, when you look at the overall development plan, we're developing around the expansion, so all the parking is going to be in on Phase One. And that's part of the reason you see their, their employee ratio, this is a corporate office, their employee ratio is a little bit higher than normal, so we are exceeding parking in anticipation of that.
Are there any other questions, the applicant?
Yeah, we're so happy they're staying here.
Let's hope.
For sure.
Us as well.
Are there any other questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody in the audience like to speak in favor of this issue? Is there anybody like to speak against this issue? I guess nobody, I guess nobody even wishes to speak, do they?
Wait, the next one.
Is there?
No, I don't think we need a, yeah, I need a motion, obviously.
Okay. Motion to approve Masco Development 2014-112.
Second.
Second.
Motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Yeah, I just want to say what a pleasure it is to have somebody come here who knows what our rules are and even wants to stay within them. I mean, that is just.
We work very closely with staff and I can't do it on my own, I assure you. I mean, we propose the projects.
I can tell you it's a pleasure having that.
Well, it's a pleasure working within the guidelines as well.
Thank you. It's going to be a handsome building.
Very nice. Thank you.
Okay. Next item, agenda number, item number 10. A rezoning residential planned unit development, Second Amendment, DEV 2014-140, Tuscany Woods, RPUD.
Good evening. Rose Askew Planner with the city. This is a request by Michael J. Woods, Esquire Cobb Cole, on behalf of KB Home Jacksonville, LOC, to amend the existing residential planned unit development agreement for property located on Tuscany Chase Drive to permit 48% maximum building coverage and to increase the maximum impervious area allowed from 50% to 55% and to allow for minor amendments in the future. This is a shot of an aerial of the site location. They show this north of Strickland Range Road, approximately 2,000 feet east of Clyde Morris Boulevard. Current zoning on the property is RPUD. Current land use is Level One Residential. Project history, the original PD agreement was approved in 2005 by ordinance number 0567. It was for a phase development for, to construct 222 single-family dwelling units on 103 acres. The first phase of the project has been completed. And during the first phase, there were some homes that were built that were in excess of the required impervious surface and building coverage. This PD amendment, in addition to, will, will correct that and it will also allow for future homes that are going to be built on the property to be able to meet the requirements. Right now, the properties from Phase One that were built in excess would be non-conforming if this amendment does not go through. So we're trying to correct something that happened previously as well as prevent it from happening in the future. Phase, the first amendment to the property was done in 2006 and it was revised, revised the timing for the common area and recreational improvements within the RPUD property. The Second Amendment is to increase the maximum building coverage from 35% to 48% and to increase the maximum impervious area from 50% to 55%. Additionally, it's to modify the approved PD agreement relating to future amendments to the PD. The reason, the purpose for the, this amendment is because the PD agreement is silent in the area of, when it talks about maximum building coverage and maximum impervious area, so it reverts back to the requirements in the Land Development Code. The Land Development Code maximum amounts for building coverage is 35% and for impervious surface is 50%. Additionally, when this PD agreement was approved, there was not language in the agreements back then that talked about minor amendments. So we're updating it to include the language that we include in all PD agreements right now for minor amendments and how they are to move forward. Recommendation, staff recommends approval of the Second Amendment, excuse me, to the Tuscany Woods RPUD agreement to increase the maximum building coverage to 48% and increase the maximum impervious area to 55% and to add language to allow for minor amendments in the future. An affirmative vote of six is required to recommend approval to the City Commission. The item is tentatively scheduled to be heard, to be heard by the, by the City Commission on January 7th for first reading and on January 21st, 2015, for second reading, which will be a public hearing. This concludes staff's presentation.
When you read those two figures that you said were allowed by the code, you said they went to 48?
They're requesting to increase to 48.
Yeah, what does the code allow?
The code allows 35%. Usually, in the PD agreement, it will address it, but their PD agreement was done back in 2005. It does not address building coverage and impervious surface. So it automatically, if it's not addressed in the PD agreement, it reverts back to whatever the regulations are in the current, in the Land Development Code.
All right, and what are they?
The Land Development Code regulations for maximum is 35% for building coverage and 50% for impervious surface area.
Let me elaborate on that a little bit. The technical issues with increasing impervious surface would deal with how big your ponds are. And they did an analysis, the applicant will speak to that, that shows that the ponds are sized for the increase. So ponds that are permitted are built and sized to handle this change.
Attachment B, that was part of your packet, your exhibit that you received, has the documentation that reflects that the impervious surface will still be meeting the regulations.
Okay. If I understand that, then it's, it's a 37% increase in the building coverage of a 50 by 110 lot. Is that?
Correct.
They're wanting to build a larger facility by 37% on what's allowed, what's currently allowed. And then that 10% increase in the impervious area, but you're saying that's already covered?
It's covered in, in terms of the size of their drainage system that's built in and permitted.
Trying to get my mind.
What we found in Phase One, because the, probably because the PD agreement was silent to these two standards, many of the units are built that, that had that. So they'd be non-conforming if we didn't do this. But with the engineering analysis that was done, it's taken care of with the permit and what, what is going to be handled.
Why were they not in the first RPUD that went through?
Can't speak to that. I don't know.
How many of the houses are non-conforming now or what percent?
Well, Phase One is just about finished, if not completely finished. Let them speak to how many are, it's, my understanding, it's the smallest lots have the issue or some, some of the smallest lots have the issue.
And this, and if this passed, it would make those lots, those houses conform.
The whole project, Phase One and Two will be conforming.
So there wouldn't be that issue?
Correct.
Are there any other questions of staff?
You know, it's, I'm sorry, I'm sitting here and I'm trying to remember. We changed the ratio of the lot coverage and the impervious on another development and I'm thinking, gosh, it was out, it was about two or three months ago. Did we not do, did we not do that on something? I'm sorry. Should we?
I'm sure we have varied from the minimum standard.
I was thinking that we had something that came to us before that varied from the minimum. Okay, I couldn't remember. Yeah.
Are there any other questions? Don't go home. We're going to hear from the, can we hear from the applicants, please? Would you make sure you fill out a green form when you finish, please?
Without a doubt. Good evening. For the record, my name is Michael Woods with the law firm of Cobb Cole. I'm at our land office at 351 East New York Avenue, Suite 200. Here today on behalf of the applicant, KB Home. And to maybe back up as to how we got to this situation, what we're categorizing this amendment is basically a glitch bill. And it's a glitch bill that probably ought to have been addressed back when the PD was originally adopted back in 2005 by Mercedes Homes, the predecessor in title. As to the current situation, the current impact, the, the issue and the situation with impervious surface and maximum lot coverage area doesn't really affect the larger lots in Phase One. Where the problem comes to be is with the lots that are 50 and 55 feet wide. Now, this came to light during the application process for some KB homes in Phase Two, but I will tell you, KB was already processing with Phase One with not a problem. And the issue only came forward within, I guess, within the last month, month and a half. And we alerted to the problem, not only for ourselves moving forward, because what we're trying to build is in similar in keeping with the smaller lots that was done in Phase One. But it quickly became apparent that there's probably a problem with the Phase One homes that were already constructed. Now, I don't know if it was Mr. Hurt, Mr. Moore that asked specifically which ones in Lot One or in Phase One are, are impacted. We've not made that determination, mainly because an issue is not ripe until someone ripens the issue. By simple math, you can look at the original Phase One, find your 50-foot-wide lots, do the mathematics and figure out whether or not there's an issue with the 35% threshold or the 48% threshold. But we haven't formally done that because we don't want to create a situation for anybody that previously purchased through Mercedes Homes or recently purchased through with KB Homes. And the solution that was proposed by staff to resolve this problem in its entirety was to provide for an increase in the lot coverage and maximum, or in the impervious surface area to accommodate the 50, 55-foot-wide lots. And that's predominantly what would be going forward with Phase Two, which again has already been platted. Nothing proposed here is changing the density. Nothing here is for changing the intensity. As to why maximum lot coverage is here in tandem with the impervious surface area, those things go hand in hand. You modify one, you got to make sure the other one works. And what you have in your application package is, I believe, attachment A or B is a certification from the engineer that by increasing both of these numbers from 35 to 48 and from 50 to 55, the stormwater systems designed for Phase One and Phase Two are sufficient to handle that. So from an impact to a neighboring property or anything of that nature, that is not going to be the situation. What we are really having to do, and quite frankly, I'm kind of at a loss as to how this wasn't addressed in 2005 because in 2005 it contemplated narrower lots. I mean, there's, it just, but I can't worry about that. The situation is what it is right now and this is what we've proposed to solve it globally, not just for KB moving forward, but for all issues that were previously provided or had previously been or had the potential for coming to fruition. So, very simple. It's a, it's a two-line amendment to the text of the agreement eventually. It'll be modifying or adding an express threshold for the impervious area and for maximum lot coverage because right now it's silent. And then the third element here is at the, again, at the request of the city is to provide the new boilerplate language that the city utilizes for the modifications in the future, for the de minimis modifications and the like that is standard in current PDs but was not in place back in 2005 or during the Second Amendment in 2006. I guess the other thing to let you know, because I see some of them in the audience tonight, we did have a neighborhood meeting. It was on Monday night. Picked on the coldest night of the year. Unfortunately, we did it at their meeting grounds in Phase One, which was an outdoor lanai. So we, we were bundled up and spoke to the issues. And I anticipate, with them being here, they may have additional questions. Some of the conversation at that meeting drifted a little bit beyond the request before you, beyond impervious area and lot coverage. But again, what we're trying to accomplish here is, is clean up price, price, something that ought to have been caught a while ago and allow us to move forward. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, but I'd like to reserve some time just in case I need to respond to any other questions from the audience.
Yes.
Did I understand, you're, you're going from a 50-foot-wide by 110 to 55?
No, the lot size changes, or the lot sizes are not changing.
Are not changing.
Not at all. What the, what the problem is, is because of the silence in the development agreement, the math doesn't work out on the 50 and 55-foot-wide lots. You start pumping up into that 35% threshold very, very quickly based on what Mercedes built initially and then the models that are coming forward with, with KB.
I think that's a perfect explanation if you've got, developed some stormwater plans that will handle the, the reduction in, in, in a percolating area. But I'm surprised I don't see an engineer letter saying, here's what we've done to allow for this increased.
Well, that's what the, the attachment B is there for, is to state that what was originally designed was over-engineered and can handle the capacity of what is being proposed now. And that's, that was the first threshold issue that I was concerned about when we got brought into the meeting of, if we're not just dealing with this on a lot-by-lot basis and it's probably better to go globally, can we make sure that we're not creating a new problem? And so that was the material that was submitted into the city for the city's review and approval, so.
I'm not an engineer, but this just says that you would, by increasing to the 55% and increasing, then you would meet the need, but it doesn't say where the water's going.
I, I, well, I don't know if Dennis wants to touch on that, but the, the table actually says what is provided for in the stormwater capacity is, is in excess of what is being provided now. I don't know if you want to.
I'm not an engineer either. We do have engineers on staff for the city and we did have them do the review on this and the analysis and they, and they found it acceptable to the city and that it meets the standards.
Okay. Thank you.
I get very hesitant to speak on behalf of an engineer when I'm a lowly lawyer. But, but, but you are absolutely right. That was one of our first concerns to make sure that what we were doing would be accommodated.
I have a question, maybe a concern. To, let's see. First of all, if this is not granted, is there another way to solve this problem that you're having? Instead of opening the doors for everybody else to come in? Because one of the concerns I have is building larger houses on smaller pieces of property and then asking for exemptions.
Understood, but what is proposed right now for Phase Two are all 50, 55-foot-wide lots that this shows that is accommodating for that size. Phase One is built out in its entirety. So moving forward prospectively, it is solely what the applicant is, is requesting to do. Retroactively, we're fixing everything all in one fell swoop. You know, it would be the same as if you were treating this as a, I guess, as a new amendment or addressing it coming forward. You would say, here's the design we want to do, here's what the lot size is and here's our calculation showing that the stormwater accommodates that.
I understand the stormwater and drainage and so forth. You already made provision for that. But my concern is still the lot size is the, the, the size of houses you're building and the size of lots you're building, the proximity from one house to another house.
It won't change the setbacks. All that, all those other criteria stay in place with what was originally proposed and is recorded either on the PD or on the plat. Yeah, it, it, well and truly from the impact to the, to the, to the neighborhood is on a paperwork mathematics. I mean, this, this type of structure exists in Phase One already. It just, it's not supposed to be there and we're trying to make sure that it gets fixed.
I understand, but you're going from a 35% to 48%. That's quite a jump.
And Wes Hin is here from KB Homes to explain that a little bit. But again, the issue only comes in because we're dealing with the 50 and 55-foot-wide lots. You get, you get that percentage very quickly, you know. And that may in fact be one of the reasons why no one paid a whole lot of attention to it in the first go-around. You know, 2000, well, 2004, we would have had those issues. But when you're dealing with a larger lot, you don't come up to those thresholds whatsoever. And, you know, that standard 35%, if you're dealing with a 65, 75-foot. if you're dealing with a 65, 75-foot wide lot, it's not, that's very doable, very manageable. It's just we're bubbling up against the 35% very quickly with a 50-foot wide lot. And I don't know if you want anything specific as far as the calculations to that point.
My name is Wes Hinton. I'm the Director of Land Development with KB Home at 1616 Concierge Drive here. And just wanted to be sure, understanding what that calculation means. You mentioned if this thing was not passed, was there another way to accomplish it?
Exactly.
It really doesn't have any effect on the square footage of the house. It actually encourages you to build bigger houses. If we're forced to do 35-foot or 35%, you can accomplish that since we're only measuring essentially the footprint of the house, encourages you to build two stories. So, we can build a 2,500-square-foot house or a 3,000-square-foot house and stay under the threshold, but on a standard 50 by 110 lot, which is the minimum lot size in this development, a 1,600-square-foot house is 39% lot coverage, so it exceeds. So, that's really, that's kind of the go-forward is, that's how it's fixed, is you actually enable yourself to build more one-story homes than you do two-story.
Would, let me ask him a question just a minute. If it was anticipated, like 55-foot lots in Phase Two, when they did the original PUD, then this would have got caught and been put into the PUD agreement?
Correct. It's hard for me to speak to that. Typically, when we control PUDs from the beginning, like I said, we bought this as a distressed asset. And we bought 38 lots in Phase One, and we bought 103 lots in Phase Two that hadn't been platted as of yet. We've since platted and developed them. You know, our kind of first go, whenever we go in for a PUD, is typically 50%. You know, Grand Champion, which, you know, we're also building in, there was an existing PUD that was 45%. So, that answers your question of, you know, there's, in, you know, some of the PUDs, it certainly goes more than 35. Where we typically run into 35 is on a 75-foot or a state lot-type development.
Okay. Are there any other questions of the applicant? Anybody? Okay.
Thank you, and just if I could reserve some time to respond.
Then we'll do that. Let's see, let's see. Was there anybody in the audience like to speak in favor of this issue? Is there anybody like to speak against? Yes, would you come forward, please?
Good night, folks. My name is Dave Bonis. I live at 117 Tuscany Chase Road. Across the street from me, our current mayor of Armley was in the 116. So you may know the area if you've been at this place. I wanted to talk about these lot sizes. I've got two areas really of concern. Number one is the footprint of the house, this 35% item. And the second item is the side yards on these houses. These chaplainauts seem to have set the figures just right. I'm also looking at Section 5.2 of your code. They currently, on the smallest house up there, which is 50 by 110, they're offering four houses for sale. They run from 1,674 square feet up to 2,052 square feet. Figuring out the percentages of that, those run from 34.4, no, 30.4, 34.2, 36.2, and 37.3. Let's recap that. On the smallest lot, the biggest house that they are offering, these are single-story houses, is 37.3. And that's a far cry from this 48 thing that we're hearing about someplace rather. On the 55-foot lot, the 35% size would give you a house of 1,925 square feet. So they've got two that are under that, one just over and one over 2.3%. On their 55 by 110-foot lots, on those same four houses which they're offering, the figures are 27.7%, 31.4%, 32.9%, 33.9%. And the cutoff point on that lot, which is 6,050 square feet, 55 by 110, I, oh, we haven't got here, is 2,118 square feet. So all those houses fit on the 55-foot lots right now. There's no need to go up to 48. The second point I have on here is about the side yards. I understand there to be 7.5 feet on each side of the house. On an interior lot, there are a lot of cases where they are not that. Take a 50-foot lot, you take 15 feet off that, you're down to 35 feet. Almost all these houses have a two-car garage on them. I think all of them do actually in Phase Two anyway. Some are free in Phase One. That's about 21 feet across. The front entrance of the house is about five feet, so there you're up to what, 26? You've got about nine more feet, including the outside lot for the room on the front of the house. It's pretty hard to put those houses in 35 feet. A lot of these houses are more than that in terms of width. I've got a 2003 house. It's not on the sheet because it's no longer being made. It would seem, and it's 40 feet across the front. If you put a 40-foot house on a 50-foot lot, you've got five feet on each side. And some of those houses, it's under five feet. That's about the size of the lot that I'm concerned about and the yards on each side of them. I have no problem with the handling of the stormwater because we have fairly good ponds up there. I haven't seen it when we got flooded with water in a few hours that we had a major storm come here, but... Well, one of the chaplainauts said on the 55-foot lot, they were up to 30-some or feet, or 30, way up in the 30s or maybe in the 40s. That's not so. All those houses in the 55-foot are under 33.9%. We have a little fear that's all up at KB because of a number of things we don't feel we've been treating too well up there. I guess I should have said that first, that we've been there an hour and a half, a year and a half, a year and a half, a year and a half. KB hasn't handled us too well in terms of the homeowners and the view of some of us. And I'm at Haven long before I was there. They put up an inferior wooden fence at the back where they're supposed to do something stronger than that, and that's been a real issue with some people up there. We haven't been getting rid of a good shake from them. And I'm really scared, Steph, and I'm not scared of much stuff, but I'm really scared, Steph, to see KB get the right to put 48% coverage or something, even close to it, on those new lots because they'll cover them with... They're in there to sell and make their money. I'm a free enterprise guy. I'm all for that. But we also need to have controls of what we do. We have controls on the, how it gets to us. We have controls on, if you're good with pharmacy, on the drugs. We have controls on, with your bike cars, on how clean they are and safe there and so what. In terms of housing, we have controls on that by zoning. And that's my issue, sir. I don't want to take up any more of your time, but if you have any questions, I would try to answer them.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
If not, I thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else like to speak against? Yes, would you come forward, please? Just take seats up here so you can come up fairly quickly. And don't forget to fill out the green form here. You've done your work, huh?
Thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be here. I think our question, I'm an individual that's caught in this narrow house. If myself and my neighbor face Tuscany Chase Drive at the edge of our property and put our hands out, we would clasp hands. That's how close we are. It's less than five feet. My major concern as a homeowner is when I go to sell, if I live long enough, my hat says I'm older than... Don't say that. Only if you're not wearing it. But what will happen to our property? If I try to sell it, they say, "Well, you need a variant." Who pays for that? Who goes through that process? Will this board be the same board that review that petition? And I understand that they're trying to correct that. It was an error that was made before most of you sat on this board. And that's why I have my erasings pretty well worn down. We all do it. However, where do I stand? Where do the other owners, and there may be five or eight or 10, I don't know how many homes, they don't have the right number, which bothers me a little bit. I don't know whether that's head in the sand. It'll go away if we make nice. Or will we modify our current status by correcting what happened in Phase One, alleviating the present owners of any legal responsibility hereafter? But is it wise to extend two errors? First, made by not reading the agreement. Second, by picking up somebody else's error, Mercedes, who didn't adhere to the agreement. And now making a third agreement that KB won't have to adhere to the agreement. When does it stop? So we're making two errors and a third one to make it correct? My genetics say two wrongs don't make a right. Sorry. And that is a big concern. I feel confident that the city will cover us who made the purchases that we didn't know, we weren't informed, and KB didn't know. Or if they did, we don't know that. And I won't even say they did or they didn't. I don't know. But we bought in with good intent. Will the city protect us? I feel they will. I have no feelings about that. But how about the new people? Now, they will have to know. Will they be told? They've only sold about five or six houses, maybe three or four in contract, but not yet, I don't know. Who's protecting them? You are. I can't. So that would be my petition. How will this affect the present owners, the future owners, and how do we rectify a fault of 15 years ago?
Okay.
I leave that to you. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else, please?
Pretty much, Kevin Green. I live at 172 Campanella Court. I'm actually one of the houses that are involved in this. He does have the paperwork on my house. I just basically want to know the same thing he said. I walked in two years ago. I bought actually one of KB Models' homes. So you can't tell me between the city inspectors and KB, nobody knew my house was a non-conforming structure. So I just want to say pretty much what he said. Where does this leave me? Obviously, the city didn't catch it. KB didn't catch it. I'm caught in the middle of it now. So I just kind of want to know if they knew about it, they didn't know about it, how it got by the city inspector. It's pretty much as simple as I got.
Okay. Thank you.
Would you complete a green sheet?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else like to speak against?
Name is Patrick Biggs. I live at 104 Campanella Court. We're the area that's really the hardest hit by this because all the lots on our area basically are the smaller lots. I personally own the smallest home in the area, and mine doesn't conform. Okay? I'm not so much interested in whether this passes or not. We need a resolution for those of us who are in nonconformance. But I'm also concerned about letting this, the 48%, if we let this grow, that's going to allow KB or any developer in the area, if there was any, you know, to change, the possibility of building the maximum-size home on any lot. So that's basically where I'm coming from, is we have to, somewhere along the line. Because most of the lots out in that back area in Phase Two are smaller lots. And they're going to try to maximize it, and you can't blame them. You know, profit and loss. But if they put their, the houses they'd probably like to sell on those lots, they're not going to conform. They're going to, they have to have the variance. But my concern is personal. I just want to make sure that I'm protected. And it's partially the city's fault. They let them go by. One of the new inspectors, I understand, found the problem. So it's up to you guys in the city council. Take care of us, please.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. And we'll shut down the public discussion. Would you like to?
I would like to ask him a question.
I'm sorry?
I needed, I wanted to ask a question.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Like in Phase Two?
Yes, sir.
These 55-foot, you're talking 55-foot lots, right?
Either 50 or 55.
50.
50 lots.
Okay, the 50-foot lots that are in Phase Two currently, what are the side setbacks?
Five feet.
It's a...
Five feet and five feet.
Three feet.
And if this goes up to 48%, it's still five foot and five foot?
Nothing changes.
Nothing changes on the setbacks?
Correct.
So currently, they can build within the five-foot side setbacks? And those setbacks remain the same, whether they can cover more or not?
Correct.
And the front setback and the rear setback remain just the same?
The setbacks change, correct.
Okay.
That's correct. And then that actually is the first point about the side yard of, that still is not being modified, not being changed. I think Mr. West made a good point of, from a size perspective even, you can still go vertical, you know, from a square footage standpoint. What this is saying is, you know, from a single, from a single level versus a two-story. But nothing in the PD prevents that from going vertical. In the mathematics issue, this issue was brought to us by the city. That's why we're responding to this. And what they tell us, this is a problem. So that's why we are doing this. This was alerted to us, that that's where these calculations are coming from. There was some reference here as to not agreeing or not adhering to the agreement and treating this as a, this isn't a variance. This is a PD. This is, again, it is my opinion that if I was working on this in 2005, I would have put this provision in place in 2005. And it would have been, in my opinion, higher than the 35% because it contemplated at that time 50 and 55-foot wide lots. You would have to have addressed this. And again, I think we mentioned before, other subdivisions in the area do in fact exceed that 35%. This is the procedure. This is the means by which to address this, and this is the procedure moving forward. I don't know that it would be even out of order to be doing this on a phase-by-phase basis, but the reason why we're coming here now is because we want to be able to do it on a global perspective and address the Phase One and Phase Two as well. And I talked to you about the size with the minimal vertical versus horizontal. This approval here, or recommendation for approval here moving to the city commission, prevents the issue from becoming a bigger issue. And I think it's beneficial. And I think from the standpoint of actual impact, I think we've shown that there is no impact to the adjacent property owners. And the biggest, the only thing that really gets modified that you need to worry about from a modified coverage or impervious surface area is stormwater. And the calculations have been provided to the city satisfaction to show that that's not an issue. Those are the two things. Then the third one being the city's preferred language. And that's where we find ourselves right now. So again, any other questions? But I appreciate your time.
No, I just want to clarify what I was saying. That's the five-foot side setbacks currently, that's the code.
It's the PD. We're not changing anything.
It's the PD.
Correct.
And this thing does not change any side setback, no front setback, no rear setback.
It's not to build within those.
And if this thing passed, like the two gentlemen that we're talking about, that they have the houses that cover more than the 35% or whatever, those, then the non-conforming name goes away.
And I want to be very clear, that determination hasn't been made yet for them to be a non-conforming. I don't want anyone to be thought that they put in a bad position. But we don't want that to come to that.
But if it...
But yes, to your point, yes.
But if it was...
This fixes it.
If it was deemed nonconforming, that nonconforming thing goes away?
Correct.
And then it is conforming if this passed?
Correct.
Right?
Correct. Thank you again.
I just want to be sure, there's no harm to the people who bought there earlier by anything that's passing here tonight? There's nothing that they would be called nonconforming or anything of the kind?
With this change, and any of those that are built with more impervious surface, it eliminates that potential that may be there. So, it helps them.
It helps.
Without this, they would have to go through a variance or whatever to clear title, or to sell it, or whatever, so that, and we encouraged, I don't know that the applicant was that strong about handling Phase One, but we said, let's fix the problem once. In fact, he was in this chamber earlier today, asking for four variances for four individual lots in Phase Two, and they'd have to go through every one of those that are nonconforming. And it's easier, and the biggest issue is the system, the stormwater system can handle it, so staff believes it's the best approach to move forward.
Okay. I just want to be sure that the people who own those houses, and own the ones back in the original part of that, they are protected, and they're not going to get any difficulty later on because of any of the rules that were passed at that time.
They would be conforming with the proposal.
If this passes, if it, if it does not pass, they would, you may have, they run the risk, they run the risk of being nonconforming.
And now, this also sets a standard for everybody else that comes after this, so they won't have to go through this process.
Okay.
The entire PD, correct.
Yeah. Okay. Board? Board, is there any discussion?
I think it's wonderful. I think the staff has got together with the developer and come up with a solution to protect the property owners, to protect the community, there's not stormwater going to the neighbors. It's just, it's a great solution.
Okay. Board?
Motion to approve Land Development Code text amendment, Article Three, Section Two. No, I'm on the wrong.
I was saying, which one is it?
Land Unit Development, Second Amendment, Tuscany Woods, DEB two thousand fourteen dash one forty.
I second the, second. The correct proposal.
I have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. It'll be, thank you. Thank you all for being here tonight, and we hope, we hope this has solved some of the thoughts that you had that have been a concern. Let's see, what have we got?
The next item is the Land Development Code text amendment.
Just, I think, just before we do that, did you understand that, you know, that your lot was a problem? Or, and now it's not?
Yeah, I mean, I was for it. I just didn't like the way KB talked about everything.
Oh, okay.
That's just that I knew my house was a nonconforming structure.
Okay, because I thought you didn't like it, and I thought that we were helping you, so.
No, I just didn't like the way KB.
Okay, well, go out there and get KB up there.
Don't say that.
No.
We're a friendly city here.
I'm sorry?
Why the forty-eight percent?
Yeah, that's, that's.
Well, the setbacks are still in place.
And side.
And sides.
And sides.
Back and side.
It should be inside, everything.
Talk to the.
Good to hear. All right, Dennis.
You can pay him in the lobby.
Is that your cousin?
She wants dinner.
Now that we have Dennis's fan club out of here.
I'll handle this one. This is, this is a change needed to the current Land Development Code to be in compliance with the charter amendment that just passed. You essentially approve these regulations as part of the new Land Development Code, which isn't in effect yet, so we need to actually amend the current code, because the new one won't be in effect by January one, which is what the charter said. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer.
So, there's really nothing we have to do.
Just need to make a recommendation, because the city commission, and we're going to have to accelerate it through the city commission by the end of the year as well.
So, we need a motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve Land Development Code text amendment, Article Three, Section Two, Planning Board, DEB two thousand fourteen dash one fifty-five.
Second.
Motion in second. Now, is there any discussion?
Just what, so what happens to us? Do we just, is there a little chute underneath us?
Yes. When you come, you may not be there all.
I just wanted, I always wanted to see that happen, but not to me.
So, I'm motion in second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I guess we need our, oh, I have it just here, yeah. Can we hear from the downtown Baloo?
Below?
Below.
You say below or Baloo?
Oh, no, I, no, I would not say below. It would not be nice.
The downtown Baloo Road Redevelopment Area Board met on November fourth, twelve PM. We had our call to order, roll call, the regular approval of minutes, and then we had a lengthy discussion on the Orange Avenue project. Yes, there was a lot of dismay, there were a number of questions, but we had a discussion. And it, I guess, the, we talked in general about the delay and the way the process was done for the redevelopment, and that if we ever, if there's a street that long that they have to do that kind of work, that they change the way they're doing it, because they're closing off so much and making so much unavailable. That was, that was a long, tedious discussion. Then we had an item for conditional use, Pie in the Sky Restaurant, and this is one-fifty West International Speedway, and it was for conditional use in order to permit them to serve alcoholic beverage in the restaurant. That was approved. Then we had another conditional use for Mexico Restaurant, which is one-forty-five North Ridgewood Avenue. It was the old China Dragon Enterprise. It's going to, they're going to have a restaurant inside, but they're not, they call it Mexago. They don't plan to change the name, and they're going to have a menu, they didn't have a menu for us at the time, but it would be homemade foods, desserts, that sort of thing. And they wanted to be able to serve alcoholic beverages inside.
Take out and just.
Come inside, I'll drink.
Yeah, pie and beer. Anyway, that was the conditional use for Mexago. Both those items were approved. There were no public comments. The board left still talking about the Orange Avenue project and the problems it caused. And we were adjourned, I think, about one-twenty.
Okay. Thank you very much. Midtown?
No report. Actually, the board actually met. I was out of the country, I went to Israel and came back.
That's right.
Great time. Actually, we did Israel, Palestine, and Jordan, so.
All the hot spots.
Yes. It was wonderful. Came back safe, thank God. So, I'll attend next meeting and bring you up to speed.
Okay. How about Main Street?
We don't have a rep.
We don't have a rep, do we?
Our last.
I guess there's no public comments, and I guess that John is not here tonight. Takes care of that. How about staff comments?
The only thing I have is the city commission passed the new Land Development Code on first reading. However, want to have at least one workshop on December third. You're invited. It's four o'clock before their next city commission meeting. They're going to discuss the Land Development Code, and depending on that, then we'll schedule the second reading.
Okay. Anything else?
I don't have anything else.
How about the board? Anything to be said?
Have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Yes, have a good night, Thanksgiving.
I'd just like to compliment this board again. You know, we get some issues that are not very much fun, and I thought that was all handled very well, and that's a good board, and y'all do a really nice job.
I think we're pulling together pretty good.
Yes, we do.
And I have to say, thank you, Kathy, for pointing out the flooding. I was sitting here, as you could tell, trying to persuade myself on the Madison Avenue. Once you spoke, thank you so much for doing that. I just want to say, you know, you have to really appreciate your other board members.
That's, that's a wonderful board. Good job.